Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 3, 2025, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Madrone excused tonight. So before we move on to the agenda, I want to remind the community that tomorrow night is election night, which is why we are meeting this evening on a Monday and will be doing so again next Monday because it is Veterans Day on Tuesday. So please remember to vote tomorrow. You have until 8:00 PM to get your ballot in one of our Dropbox locations throughout the county. So before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I'd like to call forward our Assistant City Manager Stacy Ray for an announcement.
Thank you for the record, Assistant City Manager Stacy Ray. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that we may have community members right now that are facing challenges in accessing food resources and just want to let community members know we want to share information that we have locally available assistance for food resources right now, that we've added some information to our website and are pushing information out through our social media channels so that folks who are struggling or may not have access to their regular food benefits that they might get through the federal government can also know that they can access the local food bank. So our Thurston County Food Bank is operating pantries and satellite sites across the area. And so we'll have that information available on our website, how folks can access the food bank. We also want to let seniors' families and families with young children and school district students know that there are dedicated options. So please reach out to Senior Services for South Sound for access for seniors. And there's still meals available through the schools as well for students. And the Washington State Department of Health website is providing information around access to WIC benefits. We also just want to add for community members who are able to, it's a very important and critical time to either donate or participate in gathering food. So we just encourage those that are able to participate in helping our friends and fellow community members and neighbors right now during this time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Any comments or questions? All right. Thank you. It's a very important time and I just want the community to know that we are keeping a track of what's happening on the SNAP benefits issue as our federal government remains shut down. And it is on the minds of each of your members on the council. And we have been having conversations with other offices at the state and federal levels as well. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. So we have no special recognition tonight, which is rare for us. So we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. We have a few people that are signed up. One person is here in person, followed by the remainder of our public commenters joining us on Zoom tonight. So we're going to go ahead and begin. But before I do, we do have one person that hasn't spoken in the last 30 days. So just a reminder that we are in an election season, so please refrain from expressing your support or opposition to a candidate or ballot measure in your comments tonight. So we'll go ahead and begin with Jim Lazar. You have two minutes for your comments. Good to see you.
Thank you. Jim Lazar, 1907 Lakehurst Drive. I'm speaking in opposition to consent calendar items 4B and 4C. I urge you to pull them and not approve them. These would give two millionaire developers, Walker John and Scott Womack, about $3 million in subsidies for their projects, which would enable them to outcompete other developers who have other projects. We have no shortage of market rate housing. Thurston County has the highest apartment vacancy rate in more than a decade right now. Every apartment complex I pass has promotional signage, much of which violates the city's sign code, and I'm disappointed the city does not enforce its sign code. The MFTE is a subsidy from other property owners and their renters to those developers. It'll drive up rents for those who rent because the owners of their properties will need to recover the higher property taxes. This is not a solution to any housing problem we have. We have more than 2,000 apartments under construction in the Olympia-Lacey-Tumwater area currently. We do have a significant shortage of affordable housing. The trifling amount that these developers will pay to the city to support affordable housing, about $150,000, is not enough to build one affordable housing unit. I urge the council to reject these applications, eliminate the market rate MFTE program. Twelve-year affordable housing, MFTE is a whole different subject. But this is just reverse Robin Hood action, taxing working families, taxing families who didn't get their SNAP allowances this month, and taxing retirees to subsidize wealthy developers. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our commenters who are online. We'll begin with Larry Jezza.
Thank you very much. This MFTE program is not what Olympians want. They don't want to pay higher taxes to give tax breaks to wealthy developers. You now acknowledge that this program is not a tax loss to the city, but rather a tax shift where the public's tax rate increases to pay for the tax giveaway. But amazingly, the response is not to restrict the program, but to expand it. Currently, this program makes taxpayers pick up the tax bill even for buildings that have $4,000 a month water view units. Support for the claim that without the incentives, market rate housing won't be built is manifestly not in evidence. The state study by Jay Lark said so, and you only have to look at the facts on the ground to see it. Lacey grew faster than Olympia, and in 2023 had only one MFTE development while Olympia had 11. Tumwater in 2023 didn't have a single market rate MFTE. The sugar coating on this property tax is that it requires some of the market rate developments to give 5% of their tax gift back to the city for affordable housing. Now, I ask you to imagine asking voters to pass a property tax increase supposedly for affordable housing, but with 95% of the higher tax going to enrich the developer and only 5% going to affordable housing. If the voters were required to approve such a program, it would fail by an even larger margin than the regional fire authority did. Think about the level of inefficiency of the use of taxpayer dollars for this. Olympians care deeply about housing, but also about fairness. I also want to make a point about transparency. When did the developers let the city know that they intended to apply for the MFTE exemption? And when did you share that with the public? Personally, I could find no indication of an MFTE being brought up for approval until I saw it in tonight's agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next, we have Rhonda Larson Kramer.
My name is Rhonda Larson Kramer, and I live at 1814 East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. I'm also speaking on the same topic. Studies across Washington show that multifamily tax exemptions do not increase housing supply. They primarily enhance developer profit margins and shift the property tax burden to regular homeowners, renters, and small landlords. If Olympia truly wants more affordable housing, it should invest in lasting affordability through inclusionary zoning, community land trusts, and partnerships with nonprofit housing providers rather than through tax exemptions for market rate projects. Tonight's three proposed MFTE projects are all eight-year market rate exemptions. Together, they will reduce developers' property taxes by about $3 million over the exemption period. That money is shifted onto other taxpayers. The result is that residents and small property owners pay more, and the community receives no affordability benefit in return. MFTEs can be a valuable tool when used to create income-restricted or mixed-income housing, but approving them for projects that would have been built anyway only weakens our collective capacity to address real housing needs. So I am asking you to please pause before approving additional market rate MFTEs and consider policies that provide genuine measurable public benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to Lisa Reiner.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I am going to continue on the same topic tonight. After going door-to-door in our community for years and years and talking to our neighbors and friends down blocks of our streets, everyone is struggling. It's not a good time for our community right now. People are having trouble paying their bills. A lot of elderly and senior citizens in general are trying to live on their Social Security. Many of them get 800 a month. Some of them get 1,200 a month, like myself, on Social Security. That's very hard to live on that kind of money. And so then we look at the multifamily tax exemptions, and what does that mean for our city of Olympia? Well, essentially, as the other speakers have said, these taxes that would normally be paid by these huge new buildings are being spread out to all the rest of the buildings in the city of Olympia, meaning that the rest of us have to pay the taxes that these big new buildings are not paying. So what does that mean? So you've got your mortgage, you've got your house insurance, and then you've got more taxes from the city of Olympia because these rich developers who have market rate housing, they call it. Market rate housing is very expensive housing. These apartments are very expensive, this market rate housing. And so basically, the rest of us are having to pick up the taxes on these properties, and it's rough. It's hard. I don't understand the city council's thinking. It's not reasonable. People are having trouble paying their bills, and here you are, more taxes to the vulnerable. It does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And lastly, we have John Newman.
Good evening, council. I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So in the same, my comment is based on the MFTE again. So about 10 years ago or more, when it was initiated, the concept of the MFTE was to build more housing specifically in downtown because there was empty property and there was demand for apartments. But since the MFT was approved, very few affordable units have been built. There's, it's all been primarily market rate, which tends to be towards the higher end. And so I wish to say and back up the first speaker that the two projects that are up for approval tonight be pulled from the consent menu, and we should review the MFTE. We should only approve tax credits for housing that supplies either affordable or low income because that's what the workers of the city need. And thank you for all your work. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, John. All right. So that concludes public comment for tonight. Are there any comments from council? All right. Seeing none. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Yeah, I just really thank the public commenters that came here in person and online. I am feeling moved by some of those comments. Yeah, and I guess I'm curious about, I'm curious what the appetite here is amongst my colleagues in response to some of the comments we heard. I know it's on consent tonight, but I think having an opportunity to have a discussion, I mean, ideally, it would be for affordable housing units. And the argument of shifting the tax burden, I think there's some validity to that. So, yeah, would love to hear from colleagues.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess the floor is open. Any comments?
I will say that I understand the concern. Mayor Protem, you're right, there is some validity to the tax shift, if you will. Unfortunately, there aren't many incentives to develop housing. And we have, we don't need just affordable housing. We also need market rate housing as well. So we need all kinds of units for various levels of income throughout the city over the course of the next 20 years and beyond. So, you know, I hear the frustration and the criticism over the eight-year MFTE, but I hear things like inclusionary zoning, land banking. These are things that we have already either are doing or have discussed or talked about as a council. So those aren't things that are foreign to us. We're very familiar with those approaches as well. But I do, I am all ears and listening for what people think is going to incentivize developers to come to our community and develop more market rate housing. I believe there was a comment that was said about it will be developed anyway, and I'm not so sure about that. But I do think the 12-year, which we've made some adjustments to recently in recent years because we realized that it was not incentivizing the development of more affordable housing. And I remember asking, like, why are we calling this an affordable housing development incentive if it's not doing that? And so the commitment that we made then was that we would continue to revisit the MFTE and continue to evaluate it to see whether or not it's doing what we intend for it to do. So I hear your comments tonight about the frustration around the eight-year, but I am all ears from my council colleagues and also from staff on what other ideas or thoughts you have around how to incentivize the development of more affordable housing that doesn't include these tax exemptions. Because so far, what we've seen is it does yield in the development of more housing. And so I would love to hear what others think will actually work. And as far as the eight-year exemption goes, we did also include the fee in lieu. So for those of you who don't know, and granted, yeah, we are, we're not talking about a sizable amount of money, but there is a fee in lieu of, by receiving the eight-year exemption, you pay a fee that goes into a pot for more affordable housing, for those of you who may not know that, who are listening and watching. And that's something that we've done as well to make sure that even though the eight-year exemption is being used, that there is a continued effort to support the development of affordable housing.
Yes. Councilmember Vanderpoel, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I guess a couple of thoughts I have at this is, recently, I chatted with a friend of mine who got his urban planning in the Netherlands, and he has, so a lot of his perspective is very European when it comes to housing. And, you know, take that as you will, but the model that he expressed to me around affordability, because if we say affordability is 30% of someone's income or less, that's how it's defined usually, I think about the idea of public social housing. And this is something that the city would, is expensive. It takes a lot of investment, takes a lot of time. It would require partnerships with builders locally. But I think that, I think the way to create permanent supportive housing is either by just building it and working cooperatively, trying to make it become cooperative models of public housing where it's capped at 20, so in the Netherlands, it's 25% of your income. Regardless, you can live in social or public housing regardless of your income, it's 25% of your income. Regardless of your income goes up or down, it's 25% of your income. I honestly think that the answer, the scalable answer to housing, for the housing shortage that we deal with as a state, it could be either done by the city or could done by a region or can be done by the state itself, is public development. And I'm interested in that conversation. And I know that, I realize that we're in a tight budget, but that's kind of, in my mind, I feel the ultimate answer. The other thing that you can, we could do and really consider, which we did with the Affordable Housing Emergency Pilot, is put a covenant on properties saying that it would be permanent supportive, or permanent affordability capped for 25, 50 years, however long you want to set it, kind of like how a land trust functions, where it's 99-year lease, where it is capped for an extended period of time, saying that it is off the market in the sense that it is stuck at that rate for a long period of time so that it doesn't go out into the market and it fluctuates. Because that's kind of part of the problem that I'm seeing is, you know, we're seeing a lot of apartments being built that you don't own, and the rates keep going up and up and up and up. And, you know, you go out there and talk to Olympians, and the rent that they're paying now is as high as some people are paying for mortgages when they bought homes 10 years ago. And so this is kind of the problem I am seeing. And so that's where my mind is with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Trying to think of the last time we had a good policy discussion of public comment. This is fun. And an important thing to have the community keep bringing back up, because I think the unresolved question in our last conversation when we made the changes was, what are the performance indicators for when we pull and push the levers, right? So we have built a big toolbox of all these different tools, and what are the indicators when we would roll off the multifamily tax credit? I don't think that this council would roll a tool out of the toolbox on a consent calendar item when we've been promoting a program. We would have a deliberate discussion about the program, what it's, how it's benefiting and/or hurting the community, and then talk about a path forward in the right environment, obviously. We've been taught that a healthy rental market is 5% plus. We've just now hit 5% this year in Olympia, which might be a good thing. That certainly says that we've been going in the right direction by getting vacancy from what I believe the low was under 2.5%. We also have this really great new study in Thurston County that tells us exactly how many units that the city needs at all income levels. And so when we look at the data that is, has been adopted and we worked with through TRPC and the city, inside the city limits, there's UGA and city, but I'll just stick with the city for now, between 80 and 100% of area median income, we need 2,093 units. Between 100 and 120% of area median income, we need 1,144 units. And above 120% of area median income, we need 2,660 units. The total unit shortage is 12,644. And as you can guess, the bulk of those are really in the lower income, but we were all very surprised at how much need there was at every income threshold in our community. So I think that it's really important that the council have a conversation and know what, and I think, like, get to the point where we can say, what are the performance indicators? And we'll turn them on and off as they happen. So if vacancy hits this or this happens here, then we'll, you know, shutter that program until the indicators show that we need it again. And that's what I would ask for the city council to come up with and have a conversation with the community about. Because it's one thing to say that the city doesn't want this, but it's another thing to look at the record of the voters who have supported it.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had asked to pull this from the consent calendar, but here we are having the conversation now. So I'm really appreciative of everybody's comments and of Councilmember Cooper's call for more discussion. I think there's a, there's a couple of specific actions that would help to inform that conversation. The first is that the state law allows us to evaluate each project individually, to have staff bring us a workup, have a set of criteria, so that we don't just blindly say yes to everything. This came up as we were expanding this tax exemption into the Capital Mall Triangle and asking, well, that's kind of open-ended. If it's thousands of units, would it be hundreds of dollars, hundreds of dollars per household? And the answer was yes, as long as we just pro forma approve every exemption that's applied for, so long as they fill the form out correctly. So other cities have chosen to evaluate the merits of individual proposals and to have council deliberate on each project. So that's one thing we might consider. The other one is to maintain the public trust in this notion of a tax shift. And I'm just going to read the last two sentences of the staff report we got that says, "Olympia's multifamily tax exemption programs operate using a tax shift rather than a tax deferral approach. This means the tax exemption projects, the tax exemption that projects experience is shifted to other Olympia property owners to maintain the overall revenue collected by the taxing districts. There's no financial impact to the city from this. We still are made whole." Right? So before our last review, we had a process where staff were getting an annual report from each of the tax exemption properties. So we were seeing rents, rent roll, some indication of impacts, some performance measures. At this point, I, at least I couldn't find in our committee reports or in, on our website, even a list of the currently exempted projects. And I think if we're going to have the conversation, that having regular reporting on the projects we've exempted and then also having an estimate on the tax burden per the median house would just be a reasonable conversation, because we want to know what the impact is. If it's 2,000 units in construction in the metro area right now, are we, you know, what's the potential in the expanded zones, both the Capital Mall area and the Martin Pacific Triangle up here that we've expanded? And, you know, so those two things of being able to evaluate each project individually and to have some public transparent reporting about what this cost, what this tax costs a household and some performance indicators on those individual projects, I think would, those would be tools to inform a future conversation on this. And I, I just, I really feel like we're kind of flying blind when we just approve them by form, that they filled the application out correctly. I don't think that's a wise way to add to the public tax burden.
City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just offer a couple of comments here. One is, as was mentioned, the council did a comprehensive review of the MFT program in 2024, and we did make some changes. One of those changes being the fee in lieu, so we could try to set some money aside towards getting affordable housing built, recognizing that we weren't seeing as many 12-year MFTs as we'd like to see. So we got out of it a different way. The projects that are in front of you are in front of you based on the policy choices enacted by the council in 2024. And so they're following the program that the council approved. So I think one of the other things I'll add to this, too, is that staff has, as part of that work in 2024, committed to working on a comprehensive set of performance measures, not just for MFT, but for all of our affordable housing incentives. And that's, that's a work in progress. And I'll get a status report for you on all of that because that's something that you all wanted to see and actually we all need to see. But what I'll say just on these specific ones that are on the consent calendar for tonight, I think those, these projects moved in good faith based on the MFT program that's in place right now. So if there's a desire to review the MFT program, my recommendation is to still approve the projects that are here because they're in front of you based on the program as you've already approved. And then if you want to then put a moratorium on MFT so we can have another discussion about it, we could do that as well. Those are your options, as I see them. Those are your options, as I see them.
Thank you. So can you give us an idea, when you say moratorium, how, for how long, and, and, and what will be in the queue in the event that we would do something like that?
So I'm not suggesting you put a moratorium in place. I'm just saying that might, that may be an option. Now, in terms of how many projects we have in the queue that would be affected by that, I'd have to get, I don't know if just send the nose that off the top of your head, but we'd have to get back to council on that.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a comment? Okay. Councilmember Green, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Yeah, I just want to jump, you know, this is very much a, a learning conversation for me, as I was not here for the earlier MFTE conversations, and I do appreciate that, that it was brought up, and then we have a, an opportunity to talk about it. You know, I agree with much of what has been said tonight, not everything, but I, I do think, you know, to what the city manager just shared, I wouldn't be in favor of even talking about a moratorium until, you know, I would be in favor of us having continued conversations. What are those benchmarks? What are, you know, what, what are our vacancy rates? Is it, have we met the original intent of the MFTE? But I think it would be very dangerous for us to think about throwing any wrenches into projects that are already in process, or, because I know those, those projects are very long-term, you know, it's not one day, somebody thinks about developing, and then the next day they're putting in the application. So I would just, for myself, I would not be in favor of, of even really looking at something like that, but I would certainly be in favor of continued conversation, revisiting this, and just seeing if it's still the right thing going forward.
Thank you. Yes. City Manager Bernie.
The Chair of Land Use Committee is not here tonight, but I'm quite sure that if she were, she'd be listening to this conversation and say, you know, of course, if there needs to be continued conversation about the program, we could, we could probably do that and work it into the land use work plan at some point next year.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpool.
Kind of the point I was going to make is I, I, I would like to see, even on land use, having a, a project-by-project review of what's coming down the pipeline, so that we know, as we go into the new year, about what, what are the benefits of each one of these? Because, you know, I, I think, I, I heard a lot of comments about taxes, which is very important, and, and, but I think the other side of it that is very important to me is, is affordability and ownership and long-term affordability. I get concerned about a project going, getting developed, and then it not really being long-term affordable, because it, over a certain period of time, it expires, or I just don't see, I don't, I don't see affordability being, that someone could live in that, in that, in that unit for twenty years and the rent not go up, which it will even under this program. And so that's the thing I'm the most concerned about, stability-wise.
Thank you. I believe we have approved projects that have had about thirty years of a fixed rate. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've, we've got some project for which we did some land banking and made a different deal that's outside of MFTE, that's, you know, gave a deal on some property with, mostly with nonprofit developers, I'll say, versus for-profit developers, that have helped us get permanent supportive housing in some, in most aspects.
Yep. Yes. So yes and yes, I hear you. Yes. Mayor Potemwen.
Yeah. Just thank you to my colleagues, I am the city manager, I appreciate the conversation. It is, I, I think new development can be exciting if done, if done the, the right way. I tend to think that they're very beautiful, when I go and tour them, when I look outside of them, generally in favor of our city progressing and, and making room for the population growth that we are about to see. And also, I really empathize and relate with folks that are already here in Olympia that are saying, hey, how is this going to impact me? And is this really going to, is this really going to help the affordability issue that we're having? So this one just, these decisions aren't always easy, and this one just feels harder. I do appreciate the fee and lieu, and know that, that there does need to be continued discussion, it doesn't necessarily need to, it's probably not going to all happen, and we're not going to find new solutions before these two projects need to be, need to have a decision. But also just highlighting that, you know, we don't have all of the tools that we want to have. This is not necessarily, not specifically for these two projects, but this is not necessarily ideal. We don't want to have a system, I don't want to have a system where we are shifting the tax burden, you know? And I'm, it's, yeah, it's tough. I mean, how many people are raising their hands, saying that, hey, I'm not only paying for myself, but I'd like to pay for someone else? That's not happening, it's not happening right now, especially. So we started off this conversation, or started off this meeting, talking about the really real issues about food assistance programs, right? And I won't go on and on about other things that are, that are making it a financial struggle for folks right now. So when these things come across, and we know that it does shift the tax burden, it's not nothing, and I know we know that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
So I, I just want to clarify on the fee and lieu, that for the, foresee, for the fifty-eight unit project, it's forty-three thousand dollars is that fee and lieu. That's less, considerably less than a thousand dollars per unit. It's not a meaningful contribution to affordable housing construction. So I understand it's, it's something, it's a gesture, but it's nothing like having twenty percent of the units be affordable on a, on a project that would qualify through affordability. There's, it's, it's, there's no equivalence there. So I, I just wanted to underscore that the amount is very, very small, as, as one of, as Larry Jezza, one of the commenters, said, it's about a nickel on a dollar that they're receiving. So just to clarify that, and I, I want to agree with City Manager Bernie, that while I very much want us to have this consideration and to have reconsideration and to have our eyes on some performance measures, I, I also wouldn't want to shift the rules in midstream. These, and actually, Mr. Jezza also asked, where were they published? And as I've been following the permitting process, it was about six months ago that people filed an application on these two projects for the multifamily tax exemption. That might be the point where Land Use Committee would review the applications and, and have some evaluation of them, but I, I would say, it's, it's a good rule of thumb to not make any sudden moves up here. And I, I would very much like all of us to be willing to engage in, in another round of conversation. I know it was difficult last time, but I think it's, it's really important, and to Councilmember Vanderpool's point about other kinds of investments, if, if the community, if, if we accidentally asked them to pay a hundred bucks a year towards this, and we instead intentionally asked for a hundred bucks a year, we would have about two and a half million dollars a year that could be invested in, in other intentional efforts to create and stabilize affordable housing. So I, I think that's, that's part of the conversation we didn't have last time, because it was late-breaking news in that 2024 evaluation, that we were in fact passing the burden to all of the homeowners in Thurston County, rather than losing tax revenue. But now that we know that we are taxing folks for this, we might consider what would be a similar dollar value program that, that would be a possible alternative to this. So, so that's a long way of saying, I asked to pull the item, but not to ask for a moratorium, moratorium, or to vote against these two projects. I, I don't think that the developers are evil, or apartments are categorically bad. That's, that's not the point. The point is, is this impactful? Is this fair to the taxpayers? And have we looked seriously at other ways that we might try to shift the, the housing availability and affordability issue? Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just, I'm taking in all the comment. I know that staff here is as well, so this week, we'll continue to have more discussion with staff, and I'll talk with Land Use Chair as well, and as we work on that work plan, and see what the discussion might look like for council as we go into next year.
Yep. That's what I was thinking. Retreat and work plan for next year. All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll just say that, first of all, thank you to our community members who came tonight, and who showed up in person and online to bring this to our attention. And thank you, councilmates, for a, a very good discussion around this. I look forward to digging in more. I think we're ju, we're just doing what we said we would do sooner, I suppose, which is that we would continue to evaluate the, the eight-year MFTE exemption specifically. So to be continued on that. All right. Yes. Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I want to clarify one last thing. You know, I, I talked about a public developer, Brett, I think the, something that Councilmember Gilman had mentioned, is also the fact that we, if we can figure out a better model to work with our nonprofits around these things too, I mean, if, if we can try to, you know, we do this with land banking, but if we had have figured out a way to work with our nonprofit developers that know how to make long-term affordable housing, in a way that we, we do the land banking, we help with the construction costs, we help with that part, and then that helps get the scale to the affordability that we're not seeing. And I think that's the thing I'm, I'm the most interested in, long-term, for our city. And then we can start looking at phasing out programs that try to get us there, but aren't getting us there, so that we focus on getting that. Because the thing that I, I have learned over the last few years, that I'm the most stressed about when it comes to public housing in the United States, is all the rules that HUD has attached to them, such as if your income goes up, suddenly you, you lose your housing, or if you, you don't qualify, or you have to fill this or that. And I, I, I think our community can do better than that. I think we can do some sort of quasi-public housing with the nonprofits or something, where that housing, regardless of your income, like I said, as, as long as, as long as your income stays, regardless of your income goes up or down, you can always live there, and you always have that stability. And I just, I, I hesitate to see the private market doing that on its own, and I think that there's lots of good partners in the community who would benefit from our assistance, because they, they struggle to do the amount of units that we need. So.
Thank you. Okay. Well, again, thank you, everyone, for a great discussion. I look forward to digging in, hopefully, early next year. All right. So that concludes Public Comment for tonight. We're going to move on to adoption of the consent calendar. Just want to check, Councilmember Gilman, that you're good on your, on your requested pulls. So are there any additional requests for pulls, for comment or questions on the consent calendar? All right. Seeing none, I need a motion.
Move to adopt the consent calendar as published.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as published signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to five A on our agenda, which is a public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program, and we have Joey Jones, a senior engineer, presenting tonight. Hi, Joey.
My name is Joey Jones, and I'm a senior engineer with the Public Works Transportation Department. Also, Sophie Stimson is here, the Transportation Director, and she can be available to help answer any questions. Throughout the presentation, I'm going to refer to the Transportation Improvement Program as the TIP. The TIP is a document that we submit to the Washington State Department of Transportation. Olympia is required to submit a TIP in order to communicate planned transportation projects to the state. It also allows Olympia to apply for federal grants. The TIP identifies projects to improve cities, the city's transportation system. This TIP is a reflection of the 2026 Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan, or CFP. Essentially, the same lists of transportation projects and funding sources are shown in the TIP as the CFP. Both the CFP and the TIP are updated annually to reflect changes to the timing of the project, the status of project funding, or to add new projects. Because they reflect the same projects, the TIP is presented to the city council for adoption alongside the CFP in the fall of each year. Attached to the staff report, you'll find two documents. One is a summary of the TIP, of all the TIP projects in a more user-friendly format, as well as a more detailed official TIP document that is required by WashDOT. The TIP is not set up in any project priority order, rather, first listed are individual projects that have secured or pending grant funds. Next in the list is our annual programs, that is also shown in the CFP, and I'll touch on this more in a minute. And then lastly, we would also show any Parks Trail projects, however, this six-year TIP does not include any Parks Trail projects, because Parks does not have any currently planned projects that will, that they intend to use federal funding for at this time. I'm going to touch on the individual projects listed in the TIP that have either secured grant funding, or projects that we are seeking funds for. The first I'm going to touch on is our Capital Way South overlay. This project will resurface the street from Capital Way, on Capital Way, and reconfigure the travel lanes on Capital Way and Capital Boulevard from the Capitol Campus to Tumwater City Limits. This street will be modified from four travel lanes to one in each, one in each direction with a center turn lane, in order to add bike lanes, reduce speeding, and improve safety and mobility along the corridor. The project is still under early concept scoping, but we hope to begin design in 2026, and then begin construction in the 2028 to 2030 timeframe. We're currently planning to apply for the National Highway System Asset Management Grant, and we're also exploring other grant options to fulfill a need of ten million dollars to help with the construction of this project. This number, as well as the construction timing, could change as we get further into the design of the project, as well as our success in grant applications. The next is the Martin Way Corridor Project. This project is to design improvements, including roundabouts, sidewalks on both sides of the street, enhanced crosswalks, enhanced bike lanes, access control, and possibly business access and transit lanes. Given the scope of this project, we are currently only showing the design phase for the project. During design, we will likely be evaluating a phased approach to construction. We were awarded a $2.5 million grant to help with the design of this project. And over the next two, two years, we will be further scoping out the project, and then plan to begin design in 2028, when the grant funds become available. Next on the list is the Pacific Avenue Enhanced Crosswalks. This project will design and construct three to five enhanced crosswalks between Poplar Street and Birch Street, as well as Steel Street and Dehart Drive. Enhancements will include high-visibility crosswalk markings, pedestrian refuge island, flashing beacons, and advanced stop here for pedestrian signs and markings. We received a $1.5 million grant to help with both the design and constructions for these crossings. The design is planned for 2028, when the grant funds become available, with construction in 2029. Last on the list is Mottman Road. This, this project includes sidewalks, enhanced bike lanes, street and pedestrian lighting, and enhanced crossings. Improvements will also include a pedestrian bridge and bike path on the north side of Mottman that includes a bridge for peds and bikes to cross Percival Creek. This project is currently under preliminary design, using grant money from WashDOT's Connecting Washington program. However, we just learned this year that WashDOT has moved the construction funding to beyond 2030. As we learn more about the construction timeline, we will update the TIP to reflect the new As I mentioned previously, the TIP also presents the six annual transportation programs as shown in the CFP. These six programs are bicycle improvements, intersection improvements, street repair, multimodal street reconstruction, sidewalks and pathways, and access and safety improvements. This allows us to apply for grants within the individual projects listed in the annual programs. Information on those individual projects within these programs can be found in the CFP. So with that, I will turn it back over to the city council to hold a public hearing, and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Joey. Any comments or questions for Joey? Councilmember Vanderpool.
I really appreciate the presentation. I think I'm glad where we're going by picking streets that are frankly not the safest. I wouldn't even ride a bike on most of the time, and saying, these main streets where people are used to driving on, people should be able to ride bikes on too, right? Should be able to cross them safely. I really appreciate all the work you folks are doing. If we could, if we could come up with a lot more money real fast, and like twenty of you guys, we, plus, we would be doing it all over town. So I really appreciate all you're doing for what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto. All right. So if we don't have All right, so if we don't have any other questions, we'll move on to opening the public hearing. We do have a few people signed up. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. And we have three folks signed up for a hearing with one in person, beginning with Jim Lazar. And you have three minutes for your comments in a public hearing.
Thank you very much. It's a delight to be here and support the adoption of this Transportation Improvement Program with its many safety improvements. Top for me is actually one that's underway now. Construction just began on roundabout fix on Henderson and Ex-Escrich, a roundabout that has resulted in a significant number of accidents, including a couple that involved my household, and one that was a very serious injury accident to one of the planners who works at TRPC. Hopefully, this fix will take care of it. I'm also, I'm really thrilled that the Capital Way project is finally moving forward, and it's been a long time. When I served on the Bike-Ped Committee, we recommended the city study this reconfiguration in 1997. I think there's two of us left in the room who were there. Sophie was part of the staff of the BPAC at that time. In 2005, the city did stutter, study it, but did not implement it, did some minor safety improvements. And now, in 2026, we're looking at actual design and ultimately construction. This is great news. I do have a couple of concerns about the Martin Way and Pacific Avenue crossing projects. These are proposed to use what is called the Rapid Reflective Flashing Beacon, the flashing yellow lights that you've seen in many places. And there are places where those are correct. But what are motorists supposed to do when they have a pedestrian in a crosswalk? They're supposed to stop. What color tells people to stop? Red. What color are the RRFBs? Yellow. They don't work very well on wide roads and high-speed roads like Pacific and Martin Way. There's a better design called the Hawk, which Lacy has installed several of, including a couple at the, by the nursing home at Panorama on Slater Kinney. I urge you to visit that site and look at how the Hawk signals work. The pedestrian pushes the button, first the lights flash yellow, then the red comes on, and the pedestrian gets a much more protected crossing. We just had a second fatality at the Rapid Reflective Flashing Beacon signs on the Elm Highway. We had a pedestrian fatality last year. We just had the second fatality was the person's dog was killed. The person was injured. Hawks are the answer. I urge you to look back at these projects before you move ahead with the flashing yellow lights. If you want people to stop, the color is red. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Sophie jotting some things down, so I, we, we hear you. So, okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to our folks that are online. We have Karen Messmer.
Hello, are we on?
Yes, you are.
Oh, good, thank you. My name is Karen Messmer. I facilitate the Active Transportation Group at Thurston Climate Action Team. The projects in the TIP implement the goals in the Comprehensive Plan and the Transportation Master Plan. They're the kind of projects that the community has been asking for. There are health and air quality benefits to improving support for active transportation. Safe walking and cycling routes give people the option to reduce their car trips, which is really important for climate emission reduction. I'm pleased to see the Capital Way project also. This is going to improve safety for people who walk and roll and use transit along that route. I will note that traffic volumes on that street are not increasing for cars, but they will increase for active transportation when there's more safe ways to get across the street and access that street with bicycling, for example. The one thing I want to add about this, and I'll note it elsewhere as well, is that the council needs to make sure that you're funding the staffing to make these projects possible. These lists look great, but it takes time to design a project, apply for grants, and implement the projects. Having a project on the list doesn't necessarily mean it will happen. I hope you will facilitate the proper staffing in the Transportation Department so that we can all look forward to these projects being completed so we have a safer, more convenient transportation system in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and lastly, we have Lisa Reiner.
Lisa's no longer online.
All right, thank you very much. Well, it's our custom to open it up to those who are in chambers, who have not had a chance to testify. If there is anyone present that wishes to testify on the Transportation Improvement Program, now is your opportunity to do so. Going once, going twice. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. So that takes us to our next item, which is 5B on our agenda, and it is a public hearing on the 2026 Preliminary Operating Budget. And we have our Finance Director, Mike Givens, who is going to be presenting to us tonight. Hi, Mike.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Payne, Mayor Protem, and members of council. I'm pleased to present to you tonight the City Manager's Preliminary 2026 Operating Budget. As you know, this has been a lengthy journey getting here tonight, as it should be to present a city's budget. This process has been involved at all levels of the city. As you know, you've been in discussions around revenues for many months. I can tell you, as your new Finance Director, I started in early June, and within about 15 minutes, I was in City Manager Bernie's office, and we were talking about the budget, as we should. As staff at all levels have worked diligently to present a budget to you and our community that is more than just numbers on a spreadsheet. It's about the programs and services that we provide to our community. A couple of the messages I'll have in this presentation tonight. One is about sustainability. And I wish I could tell you that, as your Finance Director, I'm presenting a budget that's sustainable inevitably into the future. Unfortunately, I can't. But I believe we're presenting to you and our community a budget that is sustainable for the near term. And that's good, given the conditions we're in. We're not relying heavily on our ending fund balance. In fact, right now, we're not relying on it at all. But this has been difficult to create a sustainable budget. It's meant bringing to you proposed tax increases that we know are serious and affect our community in many ways. We'll talk about that as we get into my presentation this evening. This budget is sustainable also because it proposes reductions, and that's not easy either. It means potential reduction of city employees and possible program changes. And with that comes difficult decisions. That's been difficult on many staff at many level, levels of the organization. I can tell you, I've seen the pain and strain on the city managers' faces these decisions have been considered because this isn't the first year this has happened at the city. As you know, this year's budget resulted in reductions. So the city's worked hard to create a sustainable budget, and I think we're there for what we're presenting to you for 2026. It's important that this budget is open and presented to the public, to you and to all of us at the city. We'll have multiple chances for the city, city's residents to comment on it, starting tonight with this public hearing. I mentioned, and I'll have more information in the presentation, about some tax increases that council will be considering. Starting next week on the 10th, again on Monday, as Mayor Payne pointed out, we'll have the first reading of two ordinances that are part of this budget to increase taxes. And I'll talk more about those in this, but we welcome the community to give us comment on that date. We'll have a second hearing on the operating budget. We'll have a second hearing on ordinances, and we'll go through that. But there'll be multiple times for the community to see the budget and to weigh in on it, and we welcome that. You've had many opportunities that you've seen the budget in its presentation. We've spent quite a bit of time on it, but I'm going to go through some of the parts of the City Manager's recommended budget here that we've talked about so that we're all on the same page. So we made some assumptions early on in this process. We've been able to get firmly ingrained in these assumptions at this point. We have to start building the budget with some really guesses at what we think, or perhaps I should call them educated estimates, on certain assumptions we're going to use for increases. At this point, we know what our health insurance increases will be. That's a big one for us. Our workers' compensation rates, as well as our liability insurance. As you know, that's been a steep increase for the city over the last few years. And all of that is now a part of our budget that we're presenting. And that's an important thing, really, to think about in this theme of sustainability because we're no longer taking estimates at these. We're putting them as a part of the ongoing operating budget. And I'll point that out in a couple of places. But having that 1.3 million in the budget for the Development Fee Fund, that means it's in there, it's a part of it. We're not going to have to use ending fund balance for that. That's a good thing. Now I'm going to talk about the new revenue options. And again, you'll see these for consideration before council and ordinance form next week. That's certainly another time for our community to have a chance to weigh in on this. This first revenue increase that we're bringing you as part of balancing the 2026 budget is a sales and use tax increase. This is a council manic. In other words, it doesn't have to go to a vote of the citizens. It's a council manic sales tax increase of 1/10 of 1%. This, as a reminder, was a tool given to cities and counties across Washington by the last legislative session. So if this is adopted by council, this would increase Olympia's total sales tax rate to 9.9%. There are some contingencies on this. And I believe another theme of this budget is we've been conservative in our estimates and preparation. So to make sure that we're not counting on the sales and tax increase all year, we have budgeted for six months because this is, as you know, a public safety sales tax that needs to go to the Criminal Justice Training Commission for some reviews of our policies and training procedures. And our interim police chief and her staff have been working diligently to get that application filled out. But the first step in order to submit the application is to have an ordinance approved by our legislative body. And so we'll be bringing that to you for that step in the process. I added on this slide, when sales tax can begin to be collected in the state of Washington. So there are three dates in the year, January 1st, April 1st, or July 1st. So we're shooting for that July 1st timeframe because, again, we believe that's reasonable and doable. We've already, you have to give the Department of Revenue 75 days' notice. So obviously, we've already passed the time where we could even put it in place for January 1st. Again, the ordinance will be considered on November 10th at a first reading and public hearing. We're estimating revenue from the sales tax increase in the first year 2026 at 1.5 million. As part of the recommended budget, we talked about this at the study session last month, we're recommending one-time use of 1.5 million dollars in real estate excise tax to offset the revenue for 2026. But then in a full year, finance is estimating that that 1/10 of 1% will generate $3 million. One thing we heard from council, not to rely on grants. Part of this whole legislation has some grants for hiring officers. We will still pursue that, but again, we're not counting on that revenue. So that's another thing we heard loud and clear. Ongoing revenue, ongoing expenses, balance the budget so that it's sustainable. The next item that will be before council is a second tax increase for your consideration, and that's the Business and Occupation Tax Increase. We've presented this in many forms this year. We heard from council on October 14th. You're kind of resonating around one of the scenarios. That's what we'll be bringing you. That's what I'm illustrating in this slide. All categories to the .002 rate, except for retail. That rate would be at .0015. We'll set a $500,000 threshold, and that ordinance will be before you next week as well, for you to consider, as well as the public to weigh in on. And we will have that then. We also have as a plan, several of us, led by Assistant City Manager Ray, have been talking about communication of this. If this ordinance is adopted, finance will be really working pretty quickly then to embark on notifying businesses, getting the forms changed. And dare I say here in front of you all again that we are committed to getting some sort of online filing system next year. It's not going to be ready by January 1st, but we're committed to working on it because that's important to our business community, that they have an easier way to complete those forms and make payments. So we'll work on it and get something out and have a, I even put it, we're working on the Finance Committee work plan. It's on there to talk about next year. So those are the two new revenue increases that council will be considering to balance the budget. Next are some budget enhancements, and we talked with you about these at the study session on October 14th. Nothing has changed with these. These are really ongoing costs that we're putting into the budget so that they're in there. They're things that quite possibly we've had to pay for, such as the fire department bunker gear, but we haven't put it in the budget online. It's now in there. The jail costs, that increase of $900,000. This is another example of building a sustainable budget so that we're really saying, okay, we expect that our jail costs may be this much. If they're not, all well and good, but we want to budget for our expectation of what they might be and could be so that we're not having to really backpedal and use end fund balance or change course in that way. It's a more sustainable budget. The other items on there we talked about with you, those are all included in the City Manager's recommended budget. Next are the beginning of some revenue-neutral enhancements that are included in the budget. Most all of these are offset by either savings or grants. So beginning with the additional firefighter. One thing I'll tell you about, also about the development of the budget, it's been a very thorough process, as you should expect. We had presentations by departments. It really helped for us to understand what these requests were all about. And as Fire Chief Morris explained this, it was clear that this additional position is needed for the schedule that the fire department has. This were, position is really a result then of being paid for by an offset in overtime. So that's why we're listing it as a neutral sort of enhancement. But I think for the well-being of our fire department, just the message that sends to the staff, it's an important add in the budget. And this is difficult because, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we're also recommending cuts to balance this budget. So none of this is taken lightly. The rest of these enhancements are neutral in that they're grant-supported or we're receiving support from other jurisdictions, cities, and the county, et cetera. The last part then of the enhancements, continue with grant-funded. The last part then of the enhancements continue with grant-funded and then that funding that might be from other sorts of sources and commitments we've made as we presented the budget and the considerations for revenues, et cetera. This concept of sidewalk maintenance was presented to you also at your study session by Transportation Director Stimson. I think this is really exciting that we're putting this forward. There'll be a four-person sidewalk repair team. This is an ongoing part of the budget funded by the TBD sales tax, the transportation benefit district sales tax that was passed by city voters. So as you can see here as outlined by Transportation Director Stimson, it's assuming approximately 20 to 25 sites of panel replacement each year. The first year cost is $830,000. And that's because there's some one-time equipment purchases and then $681,000 the following year. So that's the city's commitment to that ongoing sidewalk maintenance. So now to the more difficult part of this budget presentation, and that is the reductions that we sought to balance or really as part of balancing, again, I'm going to say to create that sustainable budget because we're not asking you to consider revenues lightly. We looked at this in every way we could, considering the reductions that were taken for 2025, but it was felt by staff at the leadership level that in order to try to make this as sustainable and without coming back to you asking for more or using reserves, that we had to make some recommended reductions. And those recommended reductions result in just over $1.2 million. And that's difficult. The guiding principles that we use for those reductions are shared here. We talked about those with you at the study session last month. I think they all speak to the focus that the city manager and leadership set for the city, that it's to provide services that our community needs. But it's difficult to consider these kinds of reductions at all. A couple of things I think that I want to highlight, and that is there, we limited public safety impacts as much as possible also to transportation because they sustained large cuts in this year's budget of 2025. So with that, these are the recommended reductions to balance the 2026 budget. I won't go through them all. You've been through them. We're sharing them publicly here. Again, I think the city manager had department directors in a room not long ago where we talked about this and we, it was weighing heavily on everyone. But to present to you a budget that we believe can be sustained, this was necessary. So these total $1,284,593. So again, I want to emphasize, we're not bringing revenue increases without really looking at this budget as to how can we get beyond 2026. But it's our sincere hope that as long as economic conditions continue about where they're at, we can be looking at a 2027 budget that doesn't have such reductions. The next steps in the process, just to reiterate, I know I've said it many times, but it's important to us that our community knows the chances they have to really weigh in on this important process because, as you know, this is a guide for our city work for the coming year. So next Monday night, we'll have another update on the budget. There could be a few nuanced changes that I learned of, and I'll have a chance to update you on that. But at the very least, to really begin to just kind of hone in on, this is it, and this is what you'll be seeing at your second hearing. As I mentioned, you'll have the ordinances for the tax increases to consider. That's the public safety sales tax and the business and occupation tax increases. Those will be two separate public hearings where the public can weigh in. Then on November 18th, back to a Tuesday night, we'll have our second public hearing on the operating budget. So we'll be here before you again, and we'll talk about if there's any changes. We'll have the final hearing then on the budget. Also that evening, we'll have the second hearing on the tax increase ordinances, the sales tax and the BNO tax increase. After that, we'll have an online, a Zoom-only meeting Thanksgiving week, the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. This will be a final budget balancing to make sure everything's still in order, that everything's looking good, and that we're on target to move the budget to you for consideration in its adoption in ordinance form in December. And so with that, I'll end my presentation and welcome any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. So this $230 million budget, I think, is both prudent and well reasoned. And I think that the reason that it's in such, such a strong proposal is first that literally dozens of city staff were part of the process of wrestling program by program with how do we, how do we get to a sustainable position? And I'm just super grateful for all of the time and energy that went in. And then the, the new revenues had multiple touches here with city council with, I think, really helpful and serious conversations about the, the pros and cons of each of the revenue opportunities that we looked at. And I believe that together, that, that staff work and, and the executive staff and council really wrestling with both the reductions and the revenue increases is going to allow us near-term sustainability, as you mentioned, and, and also allows us to continue the level of service that we're really proud to deliver. So I, I just wanted to shout out the many hands over many months who have worked on this difficult budget.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's coming from our Chair of Finance, Councilmember Gilman. All right, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank the Finance Chair for those comments, and I also want to thank the department directors and the staff for all their work as well. Just one quick clarifier on November 10th. So the two tax ordinances are coming November 10th. They're coming on consent. Under public comment, folks can comment on those ordinances, but they're not coming forward as separate public hearings.
Thank you for that clarification. That's a very important distinction. But obviously, they can also be pulled by council for comments as well if folks want to hear more. So any additional questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much, Mike. And I'll just piggyback off of Councilmember Gilman's comments and say, and thank you to all of the various departments that are taking the impact of and, and aren't going to have maybe some long-awaited vacancies filled. And we just appreciate everybody who's going to have to carry a heavier load as a result of the reductions we need to make this year. I've said it before, but I'll just keep saying it because it's, it's true. It's important the work will continue even though those positions will go without them. So, okay. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the 2026 preliminary operating budget. And we have a few people signed up as well, beginning with our in-person commenter, Jim Lazar. Again, three minutes for your comments.
Thank you. Let's be clear where the problem in this budget comes from. It comes from Initiative 747. If that initiative hadn't limited property tax increases to a fraction of inflation, the city would be receiving $10 million a year in additional property tax every year. That's where the problem comes from. You can thank Tim Iman and the voters of other parts of the state for that. It did not pass in Olympia. Turning to a very specific issue, I think I've identified a calculation error on page 22 of the preliminary operating budget. That erroneously incorporates the half percent public utility tax that the council adopted in 1997 into the 11% formula under the inter-local agreement. That 1997 ordinance dedicates that half percent of the public utility tax to parks maintenance and specifically for maintenance of specific parks, those that were built with the 1% utility tax that was adopted in 1994. If you back that out, I mean, the formula, the way it's done in the budget, essentially Parks only gets 11% of that half million dollars. They're designated to get all of that half million dollars. If you back that out, give Parks the half percent that it's designated in the 97 ordinance, plus 11% of what the inter-local agreement covers, Parks would have about another $450,000 of money from sources within the city budget. And I've communicated the detail of this in writing to the Finance Director. I hope it can be worked out very soon, and, and the correction will be coming forth to you soon. I want to end with some of my own experience. I served on the council's 2012 Budget Advisory Committee. That brought together about a dozen of us with experience in managing major budgets for utilities and, and state agencies and others in the community with, with budget experience. We were disbanded after a year. I urge you to reconvene a Budget Advisory Committee. This community is all full of really smart people with really amazing experience who are willing to donate their time to the city to help you with this work. And I urge you to take advantage of the opportunity that you have. The increase in the BNO tax is one that we recommended in 2012. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and transition to our commenters on Zoom, beginning with Karen Mesmer.
Hello, and thank you for listening to comments this evening. The budget is where the staffing discussion happens. You've, you've heard that in the presentation. Using vacancies as a way to save money in the coming year's budget is not really a sustainable approach. There's some reality to the time that's needed to fill vacancies. However, leaving positions open can delay important projects and programs. This approach can stress existing staff, and it doesn't necessarily manage your priorities in an organized way. So I'd like you to think about that for future budgeting, that you're, by simply letting the luck of the draw of someone who retires or someone who finds another job, that's pushing your priorities about what gets happened. And certainly, you can move people around in the organization or wait for something to happen till later. But you need the skills applied directly to the project at hand and the program at hand. And simply using vacancies and how they play out over time is not really managing forward. It's, it's allowing the luck of the draw to, to play with your priorities. The sidewalk repair, repair project is a situation where you have a need, you have the money, and you're going to be hiring. And I'm glad to see that happening. Thank you for moving that project forward. For other transportation projects that have dedicated funds, it appears there's not enough staff to complete those. We see those kind of projects stalling out and getting delayed. These are really important safety projects, and the community's been asking for them. Please allocate staffing so that these important projects in transportation, in your CFP and your TIP, can reduce the number of serious injury and fatality crashes we have in Olympia. I looked up the numbers in the last 12 months before August of this year. We had about 45 of those kind of incidents on our roadways. That's just too much to have people seriously injured and being killed on our roadways. We need to work on the safety projects, and we need the staff to do those projects. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Lisa Reiner.
Lisa's no longer online.
Okay. All right. You know I'm going to keep asking you that, right? Just to double check. All right, so that concludes those who have signed up in advance. Again, as is our custom, we open it up to those who are present in chambers if they wish to testify and haven't already done so. Is there anybody in chambers that wishes to testify? Going once, going twice? At this time, I'm going to close the hearing on the 2026 Preliminary Operating Budget. So that takes us to our final public hearing for tonight, which is Item 5C on your agenda. And it is a public hearing on the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan for 2026 to 2031 Financial Plan. And we have Casey Schaffler, our Associate Planner, who is presenting tonight. Hi, Casey.
Good evening.
Good to see you, and you're not last tonight.
It might be a first for me. Sorry. So. Inappropriate, sorry. All right. So for the record, my name is Casey Schaffler. I'm an Associate Planner with Community Planning and Development. Mayor and council members, thank you for having me here this evening. I am here to introduce the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan with a focus on the 2026-2031 Financial Plan, especially the first year. This document is part of the city's comprehensive plan. The preliminary CFP was issued on August 4th of 2025. Before I dive into this, I'd also like to note an error in your packet. One of the comment letters is from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I mislabeled that in the staff report, so that's an error on my part, and I apologize for any confusion as a result of that. The projects that are included in the plan come from the master plans that are developed to implement the comprehensive plan, such as the Transportation Master Plan, the Utilities Master Plans, and the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Plans. Year one of the CFP is the capital budget for 2026. Here you have the 2026 project totals by department or program of the city. These projects total $77.9 million. The majority of the funds are going toward Parks, the Armory and Yelm Highway projects, which we'll talk about here in a moment as well. The city plans to fund these projects through a variety of funding sources. Most of these sources are limited by law or city policy on what funds can be used for. For example, transportation benefit district dollars cannot be used to build parks. We are required to provide a balanced budget as well, meaning we must demonstrate that we have the ability to pay for the projects identified within the plan. Yep. The Capital Facilities Plan is updated annually. The first six years of the plan must be financially constrained. This slide shows the anticipated costs of the projects planned between 2026 and 2031 by program. These projects have an estimated cost of just over $344 million. This slide shows the funding strategy to pay for those projects proposed for 2026 through 2031. Again, most of these funds are dedicated for certain types of projects. Next, I'd like to transition into what the projects and funds actually build, starting with Parks, Arts, and Recreation. Through a variety of funding sources, as shown on this slide, the 2026 capital budget for these projects is approximately $46.9 million. The majority of the funding is made up of general bond issuances, state grants, impact fees, and funds from the Olympia Metropolitan District, among other financing sources. Highlighting some of these projects, we'll start with the Armory Creative Campus Phase 1. This includes accessibility and access improvements, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, sprinkler systems, seismic, and energy studies. systems, seismic, and energy studies, architectural design and permitting, in addition to necessary code and safety improvements essential to opening the building to the public. We also have the Yelm Highway Community Park Phase 1, which includes a soccer field, parking, restroom, pickleball, and basketball courts, a soccer mini pitch, inclusive playground, walking loop, and dog park. Three grants totaling $2.85 million have been awarded from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office to help fund those project, that project. For transportation, the amount for 2026 is $10.7 million. The majority of funding is coming from REIT, which stands for the Real Estate and Excise Tax Fund, Transportation Benefit District, impact fees, and state and federal grants. It is important to note that projects may or may not physically begin construction in the year it is listed. Many projects require funding over multiple years in order to be able to pay for them. General Capital Facilities essentially covers capital improvements to the city-owned buildings. In 2026, $1 million is being proposed in order to add a solar panel to the maintenance center and Olympic Center roofs. These projects are dependent on grant funding from the Department of Commerce. In the past several years, general facilities projects were supported primarily by cable TV tax and an annual contribution from the general fund. From 2017 through 2019, cable tax has been declining 2% to 5%, and you'll note that the Planning Commission highlights that as a concern within their planning comment For 2026, drinking water projects totaled just over $6 million, and I would highlight here, a lot of this is dedicated towards replacement of aging water mains, and this was something that was also noted in the Planning Commission's comment letter. For wastewater, which is our sewer network, the planned projects come in at about $9.3 million for 2026. This includes a significant project at the Old Port One Lift Station, which totals At $1.9 million, the storm and surface water projects for 2026 include several projects. Highlights include the Capital Way at A Avenue Pipe Replacement, Peak Flow Reduction Project, as well as the Pacmar Lead Removal. And again, highlighting that there's a fair amount of pipe replacement as well. All right. Capital projects identified for the years 2026 through 2031 for the Fire Department include new or replacement fire apparatus and aid units. The Fire Department is also proposing to remodel two fire stations in the next six years and to build a new station in the event that the city decides to annex the southeast urban growth area. The Olympia Fire Department's capital facility projects and associated new fire apparatus will require issuance of general obligation debt via voter-approved property tax levies. With a voter-approved property tax levy each year, property taxes are levied only for the cost of the annual debt service. $2 million is proposed for 2026. In 2026, Capital Facilities Plan Waste Resources continues the facility planning, design, and construction of a new maintenance facility. The facility is currently planned to be located at Carpenter Road within a few miles of the Thurston County Waste and Recovery Center. This project encompasses the planning, design, and construction of a new utility maintenance facility, and I'm fairly certain that you folks are aware of that, but for others. Currently, the operations are based at the Public Works Maintenance Center at 1401 East Side Street, which was built in 1976 and is now at full capacity. So this also includes the 2017 feasibility study that confirmed the utility can function efficiently from a separate facility, with the Carpenter Road site identified as optimal due to its proximity to Thurston County Waste and Recovery Center. So with that, anyone who would like to review the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan may obtain a copy on the city's website at olympia.gov, excuse me, olympioa.gov/budget. Within your packet, you will also find comment letters from the Planning Commission, the Utility Advisory Committee, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the Parks Arts and Recreation Committee. You will also note that there is a question-and-answer document that is included that's produced as part of the Planning Commission's Finance Subcommittee. So I would like to extend my thanks to colleagues across multiple departments, as well as the Planning Commissioners that volunteered additional time to serve on that Finance Committee to review this entire document and prepare the Planning Commission's comment letter before you this evening. So with that, we're slated to come back in December for further review and adoption of the Capital Facilities Plan for 2026 through 2031. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Casey. Any comments from council? Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Vanderpoel.
Casey, thank you, and it's fine with me if you call a lifeline here on this one. But I'm, so I've been challenged by our difficulty in securing an additional engineer to move that transportation benefit district, sales tax, sidewalk, and multimodal infrastructure projects along, and I'm seeing this list of things that I'd love to see built in the plan. And what I wanted to ask is, is it possible for Olympia to do like the State Department of Transportation is doing right now, to grab staff who are currently working in this world but not professional engineers and put them through the program? The U-Dub Civil Engineering Professional Masters Program is just over $30,000 for the masters, the tuition, either three years part-time or a year and a half full-time. And I just, I just wonder if there's any prohibition against our minting our own engineers so that we can accelerate the planning of some of these projects?
I will definitely defer to our Director of Public Works for that. All right, and he's making his way to the podium. Mark Russell, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director. That's an interesting idea. I'm not familiar with that program. It's certainly something we could look into, but in order to get a master's in engineering, you would need a bachelor's in engineering first, as far as I know from my education. And so that's something we could look into, though, to see if there's a way to help recruit engineers. But the market is getting somewhat better. We had a few more applications the last time we went out, but it just, civil engineers are hard to find, so thanks for the idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
I have a couple of questions, and it'll go to various folks. So I am, I'm going to bring this up because this was something that was a public comment almost a month ago about waste services. I'm curious, and if the city manager wants to answer this question about this. And I, we've gotten some public comment about this. You know, we got some of the dollars in the sale of the property on Plum Street. I'm curious if, and if our council has appetite for that, if, when we get those dollars, if some of that can go towards creating another facility downtown for the recycling issue that we're dealing with, the moving of.
Yeah, thank you. I'll say, so on the revenue that's coming in from the Justice Center sale, right now, it's all programmed. When I say that, it's all programmed into moving all the other things that are on the site. For example, we've got to relocate evidence storage. We bought some property to do that. We've got some staffing costs for settlement agreements and the like, but the, pretty much every penny of the 8.2 that we've taken in is going towards transition of sites, including Plum Street Village. Now, that being said, to your larger question about creating some other site downtown, as you know, Mark Russell sent all of you an email earlier this week that when it comes to the recycling center that is off of 10th over at the old Justice Center site, we're going to leave the cardboard through the holiday season. We are going to close the yard waste drop-off because that's actually on the site and has to be removed, and we're going to keep glass open for some time, probably at least six months to a year, because that's how much time we have before we have to be off the site. During that time, what Mark and his team are going to do is look at other options for how we might relocate another recycling space somewhere else. So we'll do that work, and then if we can find something that looks like a really great idea, that maybe it may involve some public-private partnership, is a good example, then we'll bring that back to council, but we're definitely going to look at those ideas.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. I noticed on there, and Station 2, Fire Department Station 2 is mentioned as a remodel. I don't know if you want to mention, if that's an expansion or is it just a remodel? Because it is one of those facilities where it's fairly tight situation.
Also making his way to the podium, Matt Morris, Chief of the Olympia Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Matt Morris, Fire Chief. You know, it's a great question, and so Station 2 on the west side would either require a remodel with expansion and additional square footage, or the concept of splitting that station into two stations into two smaller stations. And so depending on some of the development proposals that are being discussed for the west side, will kind of drive the decision-making to do that and to either relocate that existing station or split it into two.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, because remodels, and very important because it's definitely dated, but we have three vehicles and two bays, as everyone knows.
Correct, yes.
And also, I appreciate the stash, that's pretty cool.
I was just going to say something about that. You beat me to it. Yeah. City Manager Bernie.
I also did want to point out, I appreciate this question came up on the two-station remodels. As Casey mentioned, it is a conversation about a voted measure with the community to, with those kind of dollars for remodel of those stations. So we put in the CFP out in 2027 to allow us time to have conversation with council going into next year, so we can get prepared to see if that's the route we want to go. At some point in time, we're going to have to do something to bring our stations up to current standards, but it'll be a larger conversation with the council. So right now, they're a placeholder in the CFP, pending further discussion with the council and the community, so I just want to point that out as well.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Last item, and I'm going to, I'm going to mention this because this, this is something that, before he was even on council, was brought up. You know, I pulled the quote here from the BPAC about their concerns about the 101 West Olympia Access Project. I'm bringing this up because before I was on council, when we wrote our letter to the council, we mentioned that as a concern, and then I looked back at previous Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee letters, and they also had concerns several years back. I'm just curious, you know, how long are we going to have this on here? It's been on, it's been around for about 15 years now, and I just, you know, I see that as a concern financially for the city to be considered, ever considering spending money on something that would cost so much money when the city itself is switching more towards more active transportation. I'm just, I'm very curious about when, when can we remove this?
Good evening, Sophie Stimson, Transportation Director. We have had that plan, the piece of the plan that's been in the books on the CFP is designed and right away for a small amount of money, and we've been waiting to see some additional state money to move that project forward. The state has pushed off the priority of that project to beyond 2030, so we are sort of in a, sort of a holding position. You know, I think the state and Olympia were both interested in this project probably over a decade ago. I think the state has some other priorities right now, so I, I'll look to Mark Russell to see if he has some additional insight as to how we would say officially that this is not an interest to the city anymore, but, you know, we've kept it in the book, in the CFP, assuming that it's still an interest to this council and the community, but it does need other funding in order to move forward, state and potentially federal funding. I'll just see if Mark wants to add anything to that. So that's the background I have on it. I mean, I think it's, it's something that we can discuss further if it's not of interest to the council, but, you know, there is quite a bit of work that's been done to understand the needs in West Olympia and the function of the highway system in that subarea.
Thank you, Sophie. City Manager Bernie, did you have something in response?
Sophie hit it right there at the end. I just wanted to comment that there's, you know, this has been the CFP for a while as we've, as we have awaited funding, but part of why it made the CFP in the first place is this conversation between us and the state that goes back quite some time about congestion issues. If any of you have ever been trying to get off at Cooper Point and Black Lake, particularly around the holidays, when shopping picks up, it can be backed up all the way onto 101. It creates a very dangerous environment. So the thought process here is you start to break up those interchanges into more than one, and to give people other options to create more safety along 101, and then create other access points into our community, including the hospital. So the hospital, there's another route to the hospital that can make access to the hospital more easier as well. So those are some of the things that went into why this made its way into our CFP in the first place, but to Sophie's point, I don't think funding is coming anytime soon, and if we want to continue to have more of a conversation around this going into the coming years, we certainly can do that.
Thank you, City Manager Bernie. Yeah, I do believe that's also because of the fact that the Nisqually Project is a priority because of, they've made a case for national security issues with JBLM, and so protecting the interstate from sea level rise. So I know that that is a priority before this project. Councilmember Vanderpoel, are you finished?
Yeah, I would just always entertain the idea of, I don't know what the action would be as a council, but I've, I've, you know, like I said, it's been, this has been an item that the pedestrian, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee has been talking about the need to remove for, I don't know, years now, and I'm just, it's one of those things where I'm still, if that comes back next year, and I'm going to be like, okay, what are we doing, you know? So.
It's a fair enough point. Okay, so Councilmember Green, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Payne. I really just wanted to make a comment on this. Casey, I appreciate that presentation, but there was, when we had a public commenter earlier tonight talking about working more closely with nonprofit housing providers, and in the, in this, there's an attachment in this document in the Q and A from the Planning Commission that actually has a really lovely list of units that have been built since 2018 that are specifically classified affordable housing, as well as who the developer is. And I just think it's worth a look for folks because it highlights a couple of things. A, it highlights that there has been quite a few units built, but it also highlights how few developers, at least in this scenario, have done affordable housing. I mean, this is a very short list when you actually look at the different developers, and even fewer that are nonprofits. And so I just think, it's a conversation that comes up a lot with affordable housing, but I thought it was, when that, when we had the public comment earlier, it struck a chord in my memory, and I couldn't remember where I saw it tonight, but it is in the very last page of the Q and A for the Planning Commission. So I would just encourage folks to look at that. I found it quite interesting.
Thanks for that reminder. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. At the risk of having discussion here, since the city manager asked if there was council interest in removing the 101 interchange, I believe that we are the hospital hub, the shopping hub, professional services for five counties around, and those people are not going to walk here from Pacific, Waukeahom, Mason, Lewis, Grays Harbor Counties. So I think that protecting the possibility of multimodal infrastructure through the hospital and the Capitol Mall Triangle is super important, but I also think that facilitating people coming in and out of the west side from all across the region is a reasonable goal. So I'd want to have more conversation. So I'd want to have more conversation. I don't think it's a done deal that people should bicycle instead of drive from Cosmopolis or wherever else. So I just want to offer that before we head down that track.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. That makes a whole lot of sense to me. And perhaps, I mean, that's why it's been on it for this long, right? So, yeah, are we feeling like we need to have more dialogue around that? Yes, Mayor Protam, win.
I really appreciate this conversation. I'll be honest, it's a little bit much for me right now for this time. You know, I don't know if I can say let's take it away or not. But I do appreciate it. And while I tend to agree with Councilmember Gilman's comments that you just made, I still, you know, I don't want to poo-poo the comments that Councilmember Vanderpool made. And I think that's, I think it's, I think it's point well made. And so, yeah, we do need to pick this up again. We don't want our plans to be seemingly contradicting our values. And so there is a balance there. And I think that you're saying, hey, it seems a little imbalanced to what we're saying we're wanting. And I hear that. Thank you.
Additional comments? Yes, Councilmember Vanderpool.
You know, I, the other part of this I have to admit to and think about here is the point that Councilmember Gilman is making that like same issue with downtown, right? If you have enough people who live close, the density of downtown increases and you don't have a bunch of empty lots and the density is high enough, then the amount of people living there, shopping would be enough to make enough changes where you don't need the traffic from outside of downtown for downtown to survive, right? So similarly with the mall area, I see that as a potential in the future is if we, if we're successful and we have enough density and enough housing in the mall area, then you don't, you would get, you would have enough revenue from people living close enough to those needs, then you wouldn't need so much highway infrastructure. And so I think what I'm trying to get at is if we're thinking about the future of the city, it's like once the population of an area becomes dense enough, you don't need to rely on the highway system as much. And so this is why I hesitate to invest or ask the state to invest in something that we don't know where the future is going around population. And so that's in density. And so that's why I get nervous. Because as soon as you build something that is suburban in nature and sprawled in nature, you are committing yourself to more sprawl and more, less density, right? And so that's the induced demand problem that gets brought up is the idea that if you continue to build more lanes, you're choosing to invest in more car infrastructure. And so that's why I have hesitation about it. But I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you. I'd say we pick that conversation up at another time. Only, you know, because I do have thoughts about what you just said. I mean, I do think that over the years, there's been more and more of a case as to why we need to move this project forward and finally get it funded. And it's already taken long enough. But just have to wait some more. Yes, Councilmember Green. Thank you.
I can tell you'd like us to move on, but I just want to do one quick response because I appreciate this conversation. And I think the point Councilmember Gilman made about the West Side is well-made. And to Councilmember Vanderpool's comments, I think the same holds true for downtown to a certain degree because the reality is in this region, downtown Olympia is the center for arts and culture and food. And while certainly density downtown is a worthwhile priority and that's where we want to be, I think folks from out of the community, and particularly as we see the potential for a regional justice center downtown and a development from Squawson Enterprises, we're going to see people both from other parts of Thurston County where multimodal transportation is not an option and people from other counties still wanting to come. So while I can appreciate where, you know, we're trying to go, I think that that reality of the regional part of who Olympia is, you know, there's always going to be a need for people to get off the freeway, the highway because they're coming from other areas.
Yeah. All right. So we do have a few folks signed up as well. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan 2026 to 2031 Financial Plan. And we are going to begin with our in-person commenter, Mr. Jim Lazar. Three minutes.
Thank you. I'm really glad to see programming of the use of the transportation benefit sales tax in the CFP. I was here a year ago, or there a year ago, very frustrated that it had been in place for a year and we weren't seeing action. We're now seeing action. $11 million for sidewalks, Elliott Boulevard Road, East Side 22nd on page 104. $5 million for bicycle improvements, several new corridors on page 93. Couple million dollars for access and safety improvements that save lives and help people get where they're going. And there's a piece of the sidewalk repair that's in the capital budget, but the Finance Director described the majority of it as being in the operating budget. I expressed my concern in the TIP hearing about the Martin Way and Pacific Avenue pedestrian safety improvements that are in this CFP. I think that lights need to be red if you want people to stop. And I urge you to slow those projects down until they can be designed more like the projects in Lacey with the Hawk signals that turn red. We just had a little discussion about the West Side congestion. And one thing I would like you to discuss again, when you take that issue up again, if it's, that interchange project is going to come back to life is the topic of opening up the Decatur and Fern Street connections between Southwest Olympia and the auto mall and access to that freeway interchange. That neighborhood is vacillated on that issue. And I think it's an important connection that should be available. I want to finish on the issue of glass and cardboard recycling. As of December 2024, the Solid Waste Fund had $9.3 million in reserves, 7.4 million of which was unrestricted. This is out of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. With that money, you can figure out a way to solve the glass and cardboard recycling in a permanent fashion. People in this community like it, we depend on it. If we had a private garbage collector, they would be collecting our glass because the state requires all the private collectors to do so. You could maybe improve your service to be equal to that of Pacific disposal in that regard. It's better in almost every other regard. But you got the money to fix this problem and to find a place, put in the facilities, and let us have a place to bring our glass and cardboard recycling. Fix it. It's cheap, it's easy, you got the money.
Thank you very much. So we're going to transition to our commenters on Zoom, beginning with Kate Davis.
Hi, I'm Kate Davis with Olympia School District. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak this evening. It's always a pleasure to work with the city. The budget and the capital facility plan before you are truly impressive. There are significant bodies of work. The staff that worked on them and all those involved should be really proud of the time, effort, and coordination that went into developing them. The school district is fortunate to partner with the city in several ways. And I'd like to highlight a couple of joint projects featured in our plan that gets added into this. The Freedom Farm, it's getting underway. We know the city's ability to join us on this project is more further out than the six-year plan, but we continue to hope this partnership stays on the radar. We also are working on our Safe Routes to Schools Initiative. With the funds from our Technology and Safety levy, we are collaborating with the city to enhance some sidewalks and crosswalks to improve our routes for students walking and biking to schools. Lastly, I'll share that we have suspended our Impact Fees program for a second year. The projects we're working on do not add capacity and we continue to have declining enrollment. So no impact fees for Olympia School District. So we appreciate the city's continued partnership and commitment to projects that make our community safer, more connected, and more vibrant. And we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, next we have Karen Mesmer.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Walking is the original form of transportation. It's how we get to work, school, or the bus, or the park. It's how we meet our neighbors. Making it safe for walking helps everyone, no matter their age or economic situation. If a household can own one less car or no car, it makes the rest of their budget work so much better. The list of sidewalk projects is encouraging. I just will repeat what I've said before about making sure that you actually have the staffing available to make these projects move forward. I want to reiterate the yellow flashing light situation. Let's not assume that just because you see them everywhere, these yellow flashing lights are the safest crossing treatment. In situations where traffic is heavy, where speeds are high, where there are two lanes of traffic in each direction, these aren't necessarily the safest approach. Staff will tell you that they meet state standards. But that doesn't mean they're the safest, best approach. Please ask your staff to study the most recent research to make sure that you're installing treatments that truly give people a safe crossing. Another different note here, when I was on Planning Commission, we developed an economy chapter for the comprehensive plan. During that process, we concluded that the best thing the city can do is to help the local economy is to invest in the quality of community services the city has control over. These include parks, police services, transportation, fire services, and utilities, what's in this CFP. If the city developed a reputation for having bad roads, poor park system, or a poor emergency response, businesses wouldn't want to invest here. So the CFP should be considered part of your economic development work. I want to make sure you're thinking about that when you think about these investments. And it's not a separate process from what you consider economic development or helping households with their individual budget system. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And lastly, I just want to check one more time for Lisa Reiner.
Lisa's not online.
All right, thank you. So again, as is our custom, to open it up to anybody who's present, I don't think I see any new faces. But I just want to make sure if you haven't had a chance to testify yet on this, for this hearing, now is your opportunity to do so. Going once, going twice. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan and the 2026 to 2031 Financial Plan. Okay. Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Just a couple of quick questions that came out of the public hearing for me. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to the school district and the staff involved in the Safe Routes to School partnership work that's been going on. I feel like we're going to put the speedometer business out of business because we're putting them on a signpost every other block by our schools, which is awesome. And it's been such an improvement from living on Carlin and having to check out the speed trailer when you wanted to do traffic enforcement in your emphasis in your neighborhood. Including, I want to say to Public Works, the roundabout that was mentioned earlier even had its traffic signage and orange upgraded over the weekend because people were going through the mud and getting kind of stuck in the mud, I think. So that was a great improvement. And I bring all of that up because I think the comment that we keep hearing from former Councilmember Mesmer is stuck in my head now. And that's that, do we have the staff to make sure that the work is there for the new sidewalk crew in particular? So will, do we have, like, we hire a crew, we have them on the ground. Do we already have the first 10 projects ready to go? How will we, you know, are we staffing up enough to make sure that their work will be fed to keep them busy all year?
Sophie Stimson again. Yeah, and as you know, we just completed, not just, but we've completed an inventory of all sidewalk damage in the city. And that data is really pretty complex. It talks, it rates every damaged piece of sidewalk. It talks about whether an access ramp or a tree is involved. So while, yes, it is going to be a task to set up the project list for that crew, we're so well-informed in terms of what our inventory is of damaged sidewalks. I think the work moving forward, we talked about this in mid-October, is that we're not done talking to you about sidewalk repair and sidewalk repair policy. A piece of that work is talking to you about how we prioritize. How do we prioritize where we're making these repairs? We know where they are, we know a lot about them. But there is some decision-making about what comes first. So just as in our sidewalk program, we have a really strict set of criteria about how we prioritize where we're going to build brand-new sidewalks. We're suggesting we need something like that for where we repair sidewalks. So that's to come probably at the land use committee in the next half-year, in the first part of next year.
Thank you, Sophie. And can you just give us a ballpark of how much of this work is demolition and concrete versus engineering and permitting and design?
Well, because the kind of work that Sarah Green estimated is the kind of work that our crew can do, we talk about it being panel replacements. Their actual estimating work was a site is defined as about three panel repair, a site of three panels. So there's enough work that, I'm just trying to remember if I'm answering your question correctly. They won't need to have engineered plans. They will be targeting a specific type of work within the enormous inventory of damaged sidewalks. They'll be doing panel replacements. When we need to replace an access ramp or modify the curb in some complex way, say we want to add a bulb out, or say the street tree situation means that we maybe want to address an entire block, then we would shift and probably do that through an engineering process and potentially a bid. We haven't talked about that with you, how much, if at all, you want to support contractors doing more sidewalk repair like we've done in the last two years. Again, that's part of the policy discussion we need to continue with you. But yes, some of the work will still need to be engineered, but the work of that crew will not need to be.
Thank you, that's really helpful. They'll do the easy stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. And then this one is for you, I think, probably as well, because I don't know where it lives. And the comments around light color are in alignment with a conversation that I've been having with the city manager about emergency vehicles and their rear-facing lights that blind you so you can't see sometimes at the right lighting level in, you know, around dusk in particular. And have come to learn that there's a lot of standards, obviously, federal and state around safety lighting. And just wonder if, I don't know if it's a land use or a full council, but like kind of just a safety briefing around safety and lighting and pedestrians and public safety, you know, a little bit around our fleet vehicles that have safety lighting, but also around this conversation around crossings and what works and what doesn't. And so the council can have a better understanding of best practices and what's available and where the legislative decision-making is, right? Like in this, which it's not our job to tell you what product to buy, but it might be our job to understand a little bit red light, yellow light, and what that means.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to support any kind of conversation that the council wants to have there. I know that Michelle Swanson, who is here, our principal planner, has, follows national conversations around changes in technology, as does Joey Jones and Dave Smith, our two engineers. So we're always keeping up with what's happening in terms of what's available and how are we compliant with state and federal standards. So we would be happy to compile sort of a briefing paper if that's helpful.
Cool, thank you. I just want to bring that up because I didn't know where to leave it and I didn't want it to get left as, it's not really a budget question. And then just a personal note I'll add that I learned that our next fire engines will have the ability to dim and brighten the rear-facing lights based on the ambient light outside, which is super high-tech.
City Manager Bernie.
I also learned today from Chief Parker, because I want to thank Councilmember Cooper for putting me onto this because I learned a lot about flashing lights and emergency lights. But there's also some technology that we don't have that exists that would sync all of the emergency vehicles flashing lights to the same rhythm when they're on scene. Because part of what happens with distraction is they're all on different rhythms, and so you've got different pulses that are hitting you. And there's some science that says that if you can sync those pulses up, it becomes less distracting. So there is some technology that I think Chief Parker's going to talk to Chief Morris about that we might think about through our fleet that could sync our emergency lighting to resolve some of those issues. So I appreciate her digging into that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
I have a follow-up to the thought about the flashing lights. Sorry to have you come back up. But I'm very curious about, because we're, next year for land use, there's the potential of looking at automatic enforcement because the state now allows us to do that. I would like to have a, we need to have a broader community conversation about privacy and that part of it. But I'm very curious if there's ever been a thought process of putting those near the pedestrian crossings. So if someone tries to run a pedestrian crossing, they can, their plate can get taken for trying to essentially, you know, skip on safety. I'm just very curious if that's something we could do.
You know, we have, as staff, been wanting to have a conversation about camera enforcement is what I'm assuming you're referring to, right? And whether it's within school zones or speeding in general. I think it's of interest to staff and we've been wanting to do a white paper about it. So I think we should explore what the potential is for using these systems and answer your question, as well as probably several others around privacy. I think it's a pretty significant commitment. It's a brand-new program, but it's obviously of interest to the council and the community. And it makes a lot of sense, given what we're seeing in terms of speeding problems in the community. So, and in terms of your question about how it can address violations of the, of, impacts to pedestrians and crosswalks, we can explore that and respond. I don't have an answer for you right off the top of my head.
Okay. The idea is essentially if someone runs through one of those while someone's crossing, it catches them. And then it's kind of like the reason why we don't do pursuits in the city. It's like you have their plate, you know where they're going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen is yielding, so Councilmember Green.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on that to say there's a really good guide, and I'm happy to share it with you if you'd like, that there is a lot of state rules around cameras. And one of them is that they're only allowed in school zones. And I think there's a vague term like "park access." So it's possible, but I think for just a, like, speeding down Martin Way, maybe not. But I think it's worth the research.
Sure, okay. Any additional comments? All right, well, thank you all very much. Again, thank you to our community members for bringing these issues to our attention. And this is the reason we have public hearings, so thank you. All right, so we are going to move on to our business, our only business item that we have for tonight, which is Item 6A on your agenda. And it is a review of the proposed 2026 utility rates, general facility charges, impact fees, and special dedicated revenues, including Inspire Olympia, lodging tax, parking and business improvement area, or PBIA, and housing and homeless response program budgets. And we have, coming back, our Finance Director, Mike Githens, who is going to introduce our entourage of staffers presenting tonight.
For the record, Finance Director Mike Githens. We have gone through a thorough process, the departments and division directors, to look at the data behind our proposed 2026 rates and fees. We have a number of staff presenting those to you. And Mayor Payne, for your consideration, just for expediency, since there will be different staff members presenting, it might be good to ask that person questions, but we'll all certainly be around at the end. So it's, without delaying further and going into a longer presentation, which I'm sure everyone regrets that I won't, I'm going to introduce Interim Water Resources Director Gary Franks to kick us off. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Gary.
Yeah. So for the record, I'm Gary Franks. I'm the Interim Water Resources Director and also I'm the Utility Advisory Committee Liaison. With me tonight is our Drinking Water Director, Mike Vessi, and our Interim Waste Resources Director, Ron Jones. Just give you a quick budget timeline recap. On September 4th, we presented the 2026 operating budget, the general facilities charges, also known as GFCs, and the capital facilities budget to the Utility Advisory Committee. On October 2nd, the Utility Advisory Committee voted unanimously to approve the 2026 operating budget, GFCs, and capital facility budget. And a signed letter was included in the, as an attachment in your packet for tonight. And then just to note, Director Githens already talked about this, but on October 20th, we had a finance committee meeting, presented utility operating budgets, capital budgets, and GFC rate proposals, and that I think there was general support of the utility approach. So in order to produce a balanced budget, we're proposing rate increases in all the utilities. This, what you're seeing in front of you is a typical bimonthly bill, which is based on the 65-gallon cart and 165 gallons of water use per day. This also includes lots 3% rate increase that they're looking at for next year. And so just showing that, if you look up to the column to the right and you look at the proposed amount and the rate increases, you'll see that our total bimonthly bill is $334.08. That's a 3.74% increase overall total on a typical bimonthly bill. And then if you look at the bimonthly total, $12.04. So the monthly cost to a typical residential customer is going to be $6.02. And I guess one other little thing to note is just the Consumer Price Index, if you look from June to June, is around 2.7%. So we're not too far off of that. In terms of general facility charges, we're proposing a 5% rate increase across all the utilities. Lot is also proposing one as well. The one thing I just want to point out is that the column on the far right is consultant recommendations that come from different plans. So the stormwater, our stormwater management plan, our wastewater management plan, and our drinking water management plan. We've had FCS, which is a financial consultant, provide recommendations through a lot of analysis and budget analysis when those plans are approved. And in some cases, like the water management plan being adopted by city council. And so if you look at the consultant recommendation, we haven't even reached that yet. You know, for example, in stormwater, it was, the plan was in 2019, and we still haven't reached the consultant recommendation. We decided to phase it over years so it wasn't a direct hit. We're still not there yet. And so the one last point I want to make is that we're in the, we're in the process right now. We've hired a consultant. Susan Clark is here tonight. She's our engineering and planning manager who's leading the wet utilities, so stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water through a process with a financial consultant to look at our capital rates, our operating budgets, and our GFCs. And so that's, that's something we're doing. That's a multi-year rate study that we're working on, so. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Gary. Any questions or comments for Gary? All right, seeing none, thank you. Hi, Susan.
Hello, good evening. Susan McLaughlin, Community Planning, Economic Development Director. I am here to talk to you about permit fees. And then I'm going to hand it off to Deputy Director Tim Smith to talk about impact fees. So, oh, I guess I need the clicker. A while ago, a goal was set for a cost recovery of 85% for our permit fees. So this is for staff time to permit fee costs. And so that's, that's kind of the North Star, but we also realized that that's our reach goal. So I just want to keep that in mind, that we rarely have ever have really hit that 85%. But as you can see in the third bullet, we, overall cost recovery rate is around 76%. In 2021, a permit cost recovery study was done. And it basically is recommended to be done every three to five years to make sure that our costs, our permit fees, are in alignment with our cost recovery and again, in relationship to that goal. At that time, there was recommended annual increases and those to be based on labor costs. And so we use a, the wage adjustments, the annual wage adjustments as an indicator. So that's that 2.7%. So the fee study is done every three to five years, but in between, we do annual increases of 2.7% in alignment with wage adjustments. As you likely know, many of CPD's staff operate out of the Development Fee Fund. We've heard a lot about this recently in relation to the general fund contribution, which is 2.92 million for 2026. But given the fluctuation in development, in particular development over the last couple of years, we also need an additional one-time, $1.5 million transfer from general fund in 2026 to basically break even for that development fee fund. So as I had mentioned, we are recommending a 2.7% increase for all permit fees to accommodate for labor costs. In addition to that, we are recommending a new planning fee for staff-level minor variance applications. These are minor applications that staff already does. There are things like setback adjustments when setbacks can be prohibited based on some engineering. Could be slope, it could be tree retention, those kind of things. So that would be increased to $1,000. And then we are recommending to move the fire inspection fees, which are currently reside in the fire code, to Title IV with the rest of our development fees to just make it easier to increase those as we increase our permit fees. So you'll see a big jump that we're proposing this time with that fire inspection fee jumping from $39 to $85. And then in the future, it'll be just annually, as I've mentioned, through the methodology we use. Let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, I will pass it to the Deputy Director, Tim Smith.
Thank you, Susan. Excuse me.
I got all choked up. I was so emotional.
Any questions or comments for Susan? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Just a quick one. How are the, how are any of these fees affecting some of our nonprofit developers, such as Habitat or any of those? How is this compared to, between a private and a nonprofit developer, depending on where they are, just broadly?
Yeah, I mean, we, the city of Olympia, as council knows, because council has supported, we have a lot of incentives for affordable housing, nonprofit developers. And so we have, we waive a lot of relevant fees, including some permit fees, but also some impact fees. So again, the market-based development would feel the heat more of modest fee increases. But again, these are modest. And we do anticipate when we do our permit fee study next year, hopefully. That was an enhancement we had this year, but we decided to push it off. We'll see how much those fees need to increase to align with, basically, to get that cost recovery and to align with basic market trends. So all I can say is typically, fees are not the, often not the reason that are prohibitive to development. It's oftentimes access to financing, just the current state of the development market. And so right now, with inflation, contract, sorry, construction costs and financing, that's really what's at the moment inhibiting. I hope that answered your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Thank you.
Well, good evening. Tim Smith, Deputy Director, Community Planning, Economic Development. I'm here to talk about impact fees. So impact fees, let's switch the slide here, are allowed for in state law. They authorize the cities to collect impact fees to ensure adequate facilities are available to serve new growth. Basically, a growth paying its proportionate share of facilities needed to serve the community. And so Olympia collects impact fees, and we have since the 90s for transportation projects for parks, as well as for schools. We have an agreement with both the Olympia School District and the North Hurst and Public Schools to collect impact fees according to their capital facilities plan and their projected need for impact fees. I also want to mention Senate Bill 5258, which is a law that was passed in 2023 by the state legislature that requires that we look at methodology that supports lower impact fees for smaller housing units. And so this is currently a work in progress. But basically, the methodology says that you have to have your impact fees based upon one of three variables, either a number of trips, the number of bedrooms in a unit, or the square footage of the project. And so we'll go through each of the, how each one of these applies. But basically, for transportation impact fees, we've been using the trip generation, person trips for a long time, and so that's fine. What gets a little more challenging is with both schools and parks because while parks does account for fewer people living in an ADU, for example, so the rate is lower. Now they have to base the rate, not on the use type, but based upon whether either the square footage or the number of bedrooms. And so tonight, and the ordinance will be bringing forward this fall, does not have a solution for the parks' impact fees. That'll be coming next. We're required to implement that state law by six months after the adoption of periodic update of our comprehensive plan. And so assuming our plan gets adopted in December, we have until June to adopt the new methodology. And so that's Park's plan to move forward with that. For the school districts, we have been working with North Hurst and Public Schools because they do have, still have an impact fee system in place. And so they'll be going to number of bedrooms. And so I'll talk about that a little bit, about what that means. The Olympia School District, as you heard from Kate Davis earlier, from the Olympia School District, they are continuing to temporarily suspend their impact fee program. And so their fees will remain zero at this time through 2026. So the first one category I want to talk about are the transportation impact fees. And again, these are based upon person trips, not vehicular trips necessarily because we have multimodal impact fee system and program. And so they base it all upon the impact fee rate per trip. And currently, in 2025, our impact fee rate per trip is $3,338. And that is proposed to be bumped by 10% to $3,672. The fee is based on a 2021 rate study that calls for an inflationary adjustment. However, the last few years, the city has not increased the rates, the maximum amount for inflation. We've held it low and down just because of trying to keep housing costs more affordable. And what has resulted is basically a gap of about 25% between our impact fee revenues and overall projected costs for capital projects. And so this is really a kind of a catch-up of a 10% increase. And so just to give some examples of what this means by land use type, so the top three are residential examples, and that's based upon the impact fee rate per unit. And so the current rate, for example, a single family is $4,792. This would bump up to $5,271. And like all impact fees, this is collected at the time of building permit issuance. And so it's tagged on to the total cost of a project at that time. When you go down to the bottom three, those are commercial uses. And commercial uses aren't based upon the per unit, but rather the gross square, gross floor area of a project. And so for a restaurant, the rate is currently $18.23 per square foot. That would bump up to $20.05. And then we have those rates as they apply for retail midsize, as well as office midsize uses comparing 2025 to 2026. So next, I want to talk about the park impact fees. These fees are for residential construction only. Transportation applies across the board to commercial, industrial, residential, whereas parks' fees, as well as schools', apply to only residential development. And so this is, fees are based upon our park impact fee rate study completed in 2022. It proposes a 2.9% inflationary increase based upon the Seattle Construction Cost Index. And so you can see the rate comparisons between 2025 and 2026 for the different categories of residential uses that we use here in the city. And so basically, it's a bump of 2.9%. So then lastly, I want to get into the school district impact fees. First, we have North Hurst and Public Schools. Their district covers just a small portion of the city, primarily up in the northeast section of town. Think about Franz Anderson, Selyder Kinney, Martin Way, Lily Road. That is areas is within the North Hurst and Public Schools. We hadn't collected impact fees there. We hadn't collected impact fees there for many years. We collected fees really through what was called SEPA mitigation. However, we started getting so much commercial, residential up there in that area that the district had interest in developing a program. And so the city partnered with the district to establish that through ordinance about two years ago. And so in this case, they have completed their capital facilities plan just a couple weeks ago. What they found was they do have project needs for elementary schools that are needed to support enrollment growth, but not in the middle school areas. And so because of that, and the reduced number of projects, their rate for single family will drop from $5,588.59 down to $1,847. Now, to add on to that, we've been told that that's for a single-family residence of three bedrooms or more. If it's two bedrooms or less for single family, that rate drops to zero. The same applies for multifamily. Here you have a rate currently of $23.56, dropping down to $566. That's for a two-bedroom or more unit. If it's a one-bedroom or less apartment, then that would be dropped to zero. So we wouldn't be collecting impact fees for those smaller units. And then lastly, we have the Olympia School District, and as I mentioned, Kate Davis has already testified that, that school district board of directors has already decided not to, again, they have, they've chosen to again suspend their impact fee program for 2026 due to decline in enrollment. In other words, they don't have any projects that are in the queue, needed to support new, new growth in the city. And so they'll be keeping and evaluating that at this time, but currently, moving forward for 2026, the city would not collect impact fees for residential projects within the city of Olympia. That concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Tim. I just keep thinking about how quickly this picture all changed when just a few years ago, we were talking about needing another school and, you know, and it's just completely turned around. Any questions or comments? All right.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Payne and Mayor Protem and council members. For the record, my name is Ton Jeffers, deputy director of Public Works. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about parking fee. Parking Services has worked really hard to maintain a high level of service without increasing parking meters rates or citation fees since 2020. With fee remaining, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. With fees remaining unchanged for five years, our operational costs are now outpacing our revenue. Adjusting our citation fees will help restoring balance and support the long-term sustainability of our parking programs. And for these reasons, I respectfully request your support for an increase in citation fees. And I also like to mention that the same information was also shared with the finance committee on October 20th meetings. And that Chelsea, this is Chelsea Baker Van Drew. She's our subject matter expert in all things parking services. So we've compared Olympia's current citation fees with those in several nearby cities and found that our fees are among the lowest in the region. Low citation fees limit our ability to effectively deter repeat violations and to generate the revenue needed to support the ongoing operations and improvements of the parking services program. We are proposing to bring our citation fees up to keep pace with annual inflation. The goal of this adjustment is not to be punitive, but to ensure that our parking system remains effective, fair, and financially sustainable. This proposal is not simply about generating revenue, it's about supporting a safe, accessible, vibrant downtown while maintaining a fair and efficient parking system. So these are the example of citation type and what the current fees are and what we are proposing to increase to. This final slide illustrates that this adjustment helped ensure that those who use and impact the parking system contribute fairly to its upkeep, the program remains financially viable, and that we can continue providing responsive, equitable, and effective service to our community. And thank you. That's concluded of our presentation, and if you have any question, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Ton and Chelsea. It's good to see you both. Questions from council, beginning with councilmember Gilman?
I have a question about the expired tab or no-tab fee, because there was a, I think it was a news story, it could have been somebody's social media story, that we were beginning to cite people for not having a registered vehicle parked, but it sounds like it's been an ongoing practice and we're just increasing the fee. I wonder if you could just speak to that for a moment?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Beginning of this year, our team have a discussion of resume our citation for expired tab or no tabs. And that conversation, and I, as a new director overseeing the program, I feel like we should extend the grace to our community, and I have been asking our team to given out warnings until probably two weeks ago, that, that we decided to give it, you know, we feel like we give the community enough grace time, and we also sent out a, posted in Instagrams through OPD, letting all community members know that we now going to start citing for expired tabs or no tab. So that's starting about a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you for the clarification. Oh, Chelsea.
So we used to write expired tabs tickets pretty regularly, starting back in about 2019, 2020-ish. And when we switched to our current system for parking enforcement software, we had to put that on pause because part of what we were doing was we didn't want to hammer people every single day with an expired tabs ticket. And our old system had, you know, a feature where we could put a little note that would pop up on somebody's handheld when they'd type in a license plate saying, oh, they've received a ticket within the last 30 days. So we were only ticketing people once a month for those tickets. When we switched to our current software system, that wasn't a feature that it had anymore. And our current system fairly recently decided to include that feature. So that got folded back in, and we started looking again at, okay, this is a thing we can do now without absolutely hammering the public, so.
Thank you. I try to learn something new at every council meeting, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just wanted to thank you both for sending us the directions for how to turn off ads in the parking app. So if anybody hasn't figured that out, you can go in the parking app to settings, and then you can go to product notifications and promotions, and you can churn off the third-party advertising. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Additional questions or comments? Okay. Just really quickly, this is more of a comment. First of all, thank you both. But I, you know, along the lines of the conversation about the West Side and the regional draw that we have as a city of Olympia, well, downtown certainly is no exception. And I feel really strongly that if we're collecting additional dollars for these fees, the conversation of, well, where is the parking garage for downtown? And when is that happening? So, and we've been having that conversation forever. And I don't think it's going to change anytime soon that downtown Olympia is a regional hub for, for this area. And so I hope that we're thinking about using these dollars to help us work towards that goal, because that's something I think it should be used for. Yes, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll get you partway there. So the fees that we collect here really help us run the parking program, and they don't generate, as you see, if Ton goes back to another slide, you'll see that on a year-over-year basis, you're going to end up with about $16,000 in surplus, which is what you have here. So over time, it's just not going to add up to what we need to get a parking garage built. However, one of the things that we're, we've continued to work to do is to set money aside in economic development reserves so that we can find a partnership that gets us closer to a parking garage. Structured parking is very expensive. It's, it's very expensive to do on our own, but in partnership with some other development may be really doable. We have some property downtown that we've acquired with that goal in mind, and we're going to continue to work at it. In fact, one of the things on my list for our economic development director next year is maybe provide an update to us on some of the work that she and Susan McLaughlin and CPND director are doing to look at how we entice developers into our community with that goal of finding a good partner for that site. So we'll talk more about that next year, but it has been on our list for a long time. It is something we still aspire to, and we'll continue to work towards it.
All right. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you. All right. Thank you both. Hi, Amelia.
Hello. For the record, Amelia Leighton, program specialist for the lodging tax program. So as you know, lodging tax is a restricted source to be used for tourism-related activities collected in two components. The first 2% goes to the Washington Center for the Performing Arts, and the second 2% is a competitive application reviewed and recommended by our lodging tax committee. And our 2026 lodging tax committee recommendations, it was the biggest year we've seen, as I say to you every time I'm here, we saw 39 applications, and the lodging tax committee chose to fund $1,040,000 of it, that, which is about 31 applications. So it's a big group of people. We had a significant amount of new applications and a significant ask over our anticipated revenue of $625,000. So I'll give you a moment to walk through, and if you have questions on individual applicants, let me know.
Yeah, it's always nice to see you, Amelia. I have just a question about our process with LTAC this year.
Yeah.
I feel like this is coming across to us differently, coming before us differently than it usually does. Is that?
No, this is the way it usually comes, and we have, yeah, we have the desire to pull it out from the funding, from the budgeting. It's usually in this budget process, and we, next year, you will see me just alone for this in the same way that you do for cultural access, because sticking to the budgeting process is.
Oh, perhaps it's cultural access that I'm thinking of.
Cultural access, we come to you in, and I will speak to that in the next chunk, we come to you in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I also wanted to thank Amelia. She really helped the committee be able to have more distinction between applications this year because she changed the scoring so there were more points available instead of one through 10, like one through 15 or one through 20 for different scoring items. So it showed more distinction, and that was really helpful for the committee. So keep doing that.
Yeah.
And we actually put on our agenda at the meeting and an item to talk about next steps for the next, next year. So Amelia already has a list from the committee of things to work on. And I wanted to lift up two things for the council. One is, I really think that, and I don't know if this would come out of the CLIPS committee or the finance committee, but I think that it would be really important to set some priorities for the city with LTAC. So what, what is the city council's priorities with those funding? Because right now, the committee, the only thing they have in front of them is the law. And we have some hoteliers and some really smart tourism people who get like in their head how many hotel rooms every event uses and how busy town is, you know, and then you have an elected official who doesn't. So that, that's, that's one thing. But, but as well, like I think a really good example here is with, with more applications than ever before, we had an application from the city of Lacey for the Regional Athletic Complex, which is allowable 100%, but maybe not a priority for the city of Olympia. And we didn't have a, any criteria or priorities from the city council to make this an easier decision. Because when I looked at this, and I was just one voice, the, the Regional Athletic Complex gets twice as much money as the Hands-on Children's Museum from the Public Facilities District. They don't need to be applying for LTAC from, from the city of Olympia, in my opinion. Now, the committee made a unanimous decision on this recommendation, so I'm not pushing on that, other than to say, if there were a clear set of two or three top priorities from the city council, like events in your city, or, you know, whatever that came out of that discussion, it would be an easier process for the LTAC committee to make these funding recommendations to you. The other thing that I want to add note, and this will be something for you all to pay attention to next year, you'll notice on the first slide, Amelia distinguished between the two different funding sources. The Washington Center gets the 2% off the top. This year, the county started that second funding source, and if you look at their materials, they're running it differently, and they're running it as a competitive application. And so I've gone ahead and asked our city attorney to get all of the things together from the history and the writing about why and how ours is set up the way it is so that we can defend it or decide if we're doing right by those funds. And so just, he's going to be working on that so that we make sure the whole council has those tools as you, as you make your next round of funding decisions for LTAC. But the committee, if any of them are watching, which they're not, Amelia can thank them. It was a great committee to work on, and it's a harder and hard, more, much more difficult decision-making process every year, just because there's some great things happening in our community, and it's a hard choice.
Thank you, councilmember Cooper. Mayor Protem, are you, so when I look at this, I guess I'm thinking about typically, I feel like what we usually would see is, is the funding, the amount recommended, and then the amount requested by the organization. So is that what's throwing you off?
I'll just come on here so you can hear me. Yeah, and then also, and maybe it's in your later slides, but like the scoring, you know, because you do inspire with us too, and so, or I guess cultural access. But yeah, and like, this is why you score a certain way and all of that.
Sure. So traditionally, we don't present scores to city council, but this was all scored, and I can tell you that organizations requesting, so again, really large ask this year, so this was a harder priority, but the starting point was if you scored 90 points out of the possible 110 or above, we looked at you for full funding first. Now, we did have to go then back and cut some of those larger asks down. So you'll see some of our larger organizations received a little less, who might have received full funding. The Olympia Farmers Market, for instance, they asked for 166,000. We only gave them 99. And also Harlequin, and this was based on the discussions that were had. And so this is the final funding ask. We kind of scaled it down as the points went down. So it's based on points and available funding.
Thank you. Are we able to see what they, what these groups originally asked for?
I don't have that slide, but I can prepare it. Yeah. If you have a specific group, I can let you know what that is. I have it in front of me just as a paper for reference.
Oh, sure. Well, I mean, you know, I, I have my favorite groups on here that I, you know, that, things that I'm more interested in, sure, but I'm just, would be interested in overall just seeing like where we're coming in at, because it's, it's hard to really, for me, it's hard to make any decision on these if we don't, yeah, if we don't have that, or I guess if I don't have that. And then councilmember Cooper brought up the city of Lacey's Regional Athletic Complex. For me, I'd like to take that, I don't have anything against the Regional Athletic Complex, it's just not in Olympia, so I would like to take that 45,000 and put it somewhere else.
Well, I can say that you, as a council, can choose to not fund any item on the list of the recommendations, but to change the funding amounts for other things, it then needs to go back to LTAC and have a comment section and wait 45 days before a decision is made, just for protocol.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpool?
I just want to echo what I heard from, from councilmember Cooper. The, when we did our neighborhood matching grants this year, it was my first time doing that, I, I had very similar questions. And so, it's like, to me, it's like, what is the, I want to know what are the ideal priorities with this funding, right? Is it to, is it to make sure there's maintenance on a building, or is it to make sure that we continue to fund a festival? And those things are both important, but I just think knowing what, where the priorities are for the council and the history and what other cities are doing could help me understand this a lot more, I think, going forward, because, yeah, I love that we're giving money to events that are helping out the community and have a good reinvestment from those events, but I also think that physical improvements to facilities that may need it is also very important.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool. I agree with that, as well as what Councilmember Cooper shared about, you know, establishing priorities. I think that makes complete sense. I would also like to see, for the organizations that didn't receive full funding, you mentioned that you had the scoring, it would be helpful to see the ones that aren't being fully funded, you know, can we see the scoring so that we can, and the reason why, so that we can see that for ourselves, because otherwise, we're just looking at numbers and then making a decision. So, I would appreciate that. City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, thank you. Just based on the conversation here, what I might recommend is, we come back next week on the 10th, so we're coming back next week on the 10th to give you a budget update anyway, so we can prepare the table that has the additional data that you've asked for and get the scoring information into the staff report, so that you all have it, and then we can bring Amelia back next week when Mike's back.
I'm back anyways. I'll be here for the beat update, so.
Oh, that's true. Amelia's going to be here.
I'll be here anyways.
She's going to be here anyway. So, if that works for the council, we can do it that way, and then it gives you what you need.
Great. Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. And I'd just like to ask that with that comes the precedent, because while the law allows some change, it would be really different for us to start playing with the recommendations, unless we have a, like the reason we had last year with Lake Fair to take a pause on their funding. We had a real reason for that, and I don't, I mean, other than a gut feeling, or maybe some priority in the future that we should fund within the city only, I would feel bad about the committee not knowing those priorities before, and really, I'm here to support a unanimous vote, but I understand the council might have a different discussion.
And I can also prepare just an extra slide that gives you some of the funding goals that are outlined in the RCW, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, that will lead how this discussion has been arranged in past years, and then moving forward, how you can help the committee with potential hierarchy of those goals. Yeah.
Thank you. Yes. Mayor Potemwen.
Yeah. Thanks for answering all our questions, Amelia, and preparing additional stuff that's outside of what you usually do for LTAC. For me, it's, you know, I don't question if the committee did their due diligence. I just, it's a couple of years now where I feel like there could be, like this would come across, and then certain members of council would be like, oh, well, I really want to fund Lake Fair, but then here's this, you know, contingency thing. I think many of us were there for that. And then there was the thing about the Funk Fest, right? And then we had someone from Funk Fest come, and whenever people come in person, of course, it's very, you know, it pulls at you. And then, and then we ended up, you know, trying to find money for them through our, through our council goal monies. And so, there is this, and then there was even a, when we were talking about LTAC before, I really appreciate you, this is like a couple of years ago, I really appreciate you, Councilmember Cooper, bringing up tonight again, hey, is the 2% set aside, and then 2% for everyone else? That's what I was like, I think if we just really boil it down, I think you're saying, hey, do we still want to do that? What's the reasoning for that? Or do we want to do something different, right? And that's something that I really questioned. I got a lot of emails after that for questioning that one, and I still question it. And so, and then tonight, it feels like because of the processes that we currently have in place, it almost feels like, it's like, okay, we really need to accept this, or it's going to be really strange if we don't accept it. That's just how I'm feeling. And so, I just want to get, yeah, I just want to understand more and get to a good place. I understand now that, you know, this is the way that we have been doing LTAC, but it seems like, yeah, it seems like there is some room for improvement, and so then, what tools do we have as council to say, hey, you know, maybe we don't want to do what is in this recommendation respectfully and following all the protocol? Yeah, so, I just want to, having a feeling, and I'm just trying to say it out loud, and let you understand as some, as, you know, the specialist for this program, like where it's coming from. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. And just when the Mayor Potem was speaking, Amelia, I think it would be helpful for maybe, I don't think you need to go as deep, maybe as you might, in an email to us about a lot of the things that we did this year that were add-ons to the process around the majority for fully funding, partially funding. And then the other piece that was, last year was the first time we did it, and I think this year, we did it a little bit differently, was even just looking at which of these organizations also received Inspire funds, right? And so, starting to look at, and I think as this conversation develops, you know, I really recommend that you look harder and harder at that, like especially when you're funding events, right? If we're funding events and we're funding organizations operating with two different funding sources, is that the most efficient way for us to be funding organizations in our community or not? You know, that'll be left for you all to decide in the future. But I think that, that big spreadsheet that shows some of the cultural access funding and other things would be helpful for the council, just to see all in one place.
Seeing all the process. And, yeah, I can, I can email that on and get you that before next week, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you. So, first and foremost, this is absolutely at the council's decision point to make decisions around LTAC funding. That's why it's in front of you. The full council has to accept and approve the recommendation from LTAC. So, I think where there's questions, I want to make sure you get them answered, so you feel comfortable with making, taking the action to move LTAC forward. Just as I hear the conversation about process and priorities, which I think is a great idea, to kind of get into more priorities, the one thing I would caution you is trying to change them now and then applying them to this batch of applications, because in fairness to those that applied, they may not, they may have changed the way they've applied if they would have known there's a separate set of criteria, a separate set of priorities. So, I think if you want to change priorities now, you kind of have to go back to LTAC and follow a different process, if you want to do that, which I wouldn't necessarily recommend for this year, but I'm hearing some thought process about maybe wanting to do something as you look, as you move forward. But again, that's up to you. I just put that caution out there, because I think it could be difficult to reverse course at this moment in time, versus saying we want to see something different moving forward.
Yes. I agree, which is why I agree with Councilmember Cooper's initial suggestion about establishing priorities, because I do think that that's sorely needed in this whole, you know, consideration every year around LTAC. Any additional questions or comments? Thanks, Amelia.
I'll be back. You'll see me again next week.
Okay.
And you're seeing me again because Mary Grace is out sick, so I will be taking the Cultural Access Fund. So, as you know, the Cultural Access Fund is 1/10th of 1% of Olympia's sales tax dedicated to cultural access. It's projected at $3.4 million for 2026. We spend that roughly in this way of a minimum of 80% going directly to support extended access for arts, culture, heritage, and science experiences in Olympia, and 10% can be used for transportation for public school students, and 10% can be used for administration costs. So, our projected, budgeted revenues are that 3.467, and our budgeted expenses are a little higher than our revenues, and that's part of that spend-down plan that we've talked to you about previously, when we came back in June with our funding recommendations. Because cultural access started collecting money almost a year before we started giving out money, we have some spend-down to do. One thing to think about that is some of our challenges. Our funding cycle is July 1 through June 30. That best supports cultural access in public schools, so that a program can function throughout a full school year without worrying about funding. A lot of our, our city is a big nonprofit city, in case you didn't know this, but Olympia has about 56,000 people, and we have 75 contracts with cultural organizations. Compared to Tacoma of a population of 230,000, they have about 80 contracts with their organizations. So, Olympians are here for arts, culture, science, and heritage, and we are here for them, but it is a big lift. And, yeah, we have a goal to fund both the big and the small organizations, but knowing that that goal will actually shift as our organizations' capacity grow, and a lot of our small organizations will become mid-siders organizations, and mid-sized will become big organizations, hopefully. Yeah, so looking ahead, as I mentioned, we have that spend-down, gradual spend-down of our early years programs surplus. Our granting opportunities have been increased, as we came to you earlier, so from $30,000 for impact to $50,000 is the max ask people can ask for, and then in the comprehensive, people can ask for up to 20% of their operating budget, instead of the 15, up to $85,000. So, we're growing the contracts that we might be able to give out, and we also are hoping to grow our Cultural Access in Public Schools program, which has started because we have hired a coordinator who's already on the ground running and getting that program up and going. So, we anticipate growth throughout the years there. We want to highlight that it is authorized for seven years through 12, December 31, 2029, and reauthorization can be done with Council Manic. So, in those years prior, we'll be coming back to you, just shouting the joys of this program and encouraging you to reauthorize. And we'll be back in June with another funding recommendation for our next fiscal year. And that's that. If there's any questions, I'm here.
All right. Thank you, Amelia. Any questions or comments for Amelia?
Thank you. I'll see you next week.
Thank you. Hi, Jenica.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Jenica Machado, Economic Development Division Director. I'm here to talk about the Parking Business Improvement District, or also called PBIA. So, the major funding source for the Parking Business Improvement area is Fund 135, which is an annual self-assessment on downtown businesses. For 2025, the fund was set to a $0 fee, and no collection is planned again for 2026. Currently, there are no budgeted revenues and a little over $2,800 in budgeted expenses that funds administration. As mentioned earlier, the PBIA rate was set to $0 for 2025, and we will go through the process to request an extension of the zero rate for all of 2026. I'll be back before you, December 9 and 16. As previous staff assessed the PBIA, a few key challenges were highlighted, including the PBIA fee burden disproportionately impacted smaller businesses, current ratepayer classifications and fee schedules were outdated, and business records were not consistently kept up to Additionally, the PBIA revenue did not cover the city's administrative and staffing costs, like the Advisory Board Staff Liaison and admin support for meetings. It requires labor-intensive record-keeping and invoice processing, and finance support, contract management, and complaint handling. So, looking ahead, the past and upcoming $0 rate is intended to allow the PBIA Advisory Board to move through an evaluation of the program. After some initial hurdles, we're now under contract with a consultant to conduct this evaluation and expect the project to conclude at the end of February 2026. The evaluation will provide actionable information for the PBIA to consider how to restructure to ensure the PBIA is equitable, sustainable, and effective in supporting Olympia's downtown business community and is within the administrative capacity of the city. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jenica. Mayor Potemwen.
Yeah, I've gotten a chance a couple of times to see you, I think sometimes when you haven't seen me, interacting with the PBIA. They're one of my favorite groups, so I just kind of keep closer tabs on them, but anyway. And I just really appreciate your approach with them, your, certainly your knowledge and experiences to the role, but also, I think you just have the right demeanor to work with that group. It is a group of folks that have been disappointed by things that have happened. They're really busy business owners, and, you know, not every day is a good day, and they can bring their frustrations, and, you know, they can be in and out of parliamentary procedures, and, and you just roll with it, and you handle them so well, and you have a good sense of humor about it, and you really, this is what it seems to me anyways, I feel like you are actually listening to them. I think it's really easy to come in as the staff person whose like job it is to, full-time job it is to do a thing, to kind of have like your own agenda, and you probably have like some sense of where you want it to go, but kind of have your own agenda and hear people, but not, not really listen, and try to march forward anyways, and I think you give, you give a nice balance, and I've seen them really embrace you. So, is this really about your presentation? No. But it's a good opportunity for me to, to give you, I think, really well-earned praise. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jenica? Yes. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. First, just for the record, I have not watched you work when you didn't know I was there. I just want to be clear. So, Jenica, again, you know, I also appreciate this process, this review process, and look forward to hearing more in the spring about the recommendations. We had a small discussion during Finance's presentation about the flower baskets, and I just wanted to look to our finance team, who were saying they were confident they could find, it was in the presentation, oh, in the supplemental items there, it was flower baskets, yes. So, just glad for the flower baskets to continue, however we continue to interact with small business owners downtown and get this feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Jenica.
Thank you so much.
All right. Hi, Jacinda.
Hello, Mayor Payne and council. Jacinda Stelchus, Housing Division Manager. Kim is not here tonight, so Susan will be stepping in, and I want to just note, as we head into, I think, the last item in this presentation, this does include housing's operations as well as homeless response, so it is a very complex fund. I will talk to housing, Susan will step in to talk to homeless response. So, our major funding source for both Housing Division and homeless response is Fund 142. We commonly refer to that as the home fund. It includes several different funding sources. Maybe the most notable is the 1/10th of 1% sales and use tax that voters in Olympia passed around 2018. I also want to, these are all important, but I also want to call attention to the fact that this fund, 142, also encompasses rental registry, and so that is a kind of a special tag within the fund, so revenues that come in through rental registry, also fund expenses through rental registry, but all part of the same fund here, and also includes encampment resolution, funding from the state, which Susan will likely talk a little bit more about and can answer questions, but just want to... about and can answer questions, but just want to flag those things for y'all. This fund, the majority of the fund goes to capital, so, excuse me, the, the home fund, the 1/10th of 1% home fund, and that's pooled with the county and goes to supporting affordable housing projects countywide. And then, just because we're talking about housing and homeless response as a division or operations, we do have Fund 107 as well, which is our Community Development Block Grant, which is also, you know, the revenues that come in, for the most part, and the expenses are tied to that one fund there. So you can see here, again, this is for 142 Home Fund as a whole, supporting both housing and homeless response. Projected budget revenues are significantly lower than budgeted expenses, so again, you know, we have an impact there to the balance, and we'll get too far into different kind of things that operate or impact that, a lot, a lot of that Susan will talk to as well, but are impacted by some of those, the nature of homeless response, the nature of the funding source, encampment resolution program, and other items. So challenges, this is just specific to Housing Division. Rental registering inspection program, we all came to you all in August and had a lengthy conversation about that program and changes that staff is implementing, so just noting, you know, that we're continuing to work on that. For your all's information, those new application processes are in place, and we've had a really wonderful response from landlords in saying that it's much easier, and they really appreciate that, and Sarah, and the procurement specialists, and, and the team in general continue to work through this, but still a challenge that revenues are outpacing, or excuse me, expenses are outpacing revenues in that specific program. The CDBG grant agreement is also something that I think you all have heard a little bit about, so we have about $340,000. This again, CDBG falls under Special Revenue Fund 107. This year has been quite, quite a ride with that funding, and we continue to be moving forward with trying to access that funding through the means available to us, which I will touch on a little bit later here. And just noting again, challenges, homeless response and housing were kind of one department, division, as the Housing and Homeless Response Director departed us at the beginning of the year. Those teams have, were, were split, and now are coming back together, so there's certainly challenges in that. Also noting, you know, as I was promoted to Division Director, we didn't backfill my previous position, so we are working through those challenges, and their challenges. Looking ahead, again, continued work on rental registry, continued work on making that program easier for the landlords who are registering, easier for the public to understand, and just really communicating what that is and why that is, and, you know, the importance of that program to our large rental community. Funds 145 and 146 are also kind of embedded in Fund 142. Those are, those are specific to the Affordable Housing Emergency Declaration that was passed, now I guess it was like beginning of this year, but these are the, the sources that set aside some of the utility funds for the infrastructure improvements grants. Those had to be separated so we could very closely track the revenue type and make sure it was being applied to those grants, you know, sewer for sewer and such. We continue offering our affordable housing development incentives, which include the Affordable Housing Emergency Declaration items. Tim also spoke about the impact fees, so those are waived, as well as, I think Gary talked about, the general facility charges and lot. All of those are part of development incentives that Olympia offers and is continuing to in the next year. And then this next bullet here is around CDBG. So we received our grant agreement from HUD, again, that's about $340,000, which has been, you all, Anna came to you all a few months ago and with awards, but the grant agreement does include language that we have not seen in the past, very specific to tracking immigration status and things that maybe don't align with our city values. So Anna has been amazing in keeping on top of this, talking to both regional, state, across the country, partners with CDBG, who also receive CDBG, and we anticipate that we will be able to access that funding, but obviously a little bit delayed as that program year starts September. So there's communication that she is sending out to the public and to those nonprofits to let them know where we're at there. And I will turn it over to Susan.
Mr. Mayor, before Susan jumps on there, just one thing I wanted to point out on Jacinda's PowerPoint slides was the need for some more support for the rental registry program. So when, when Mike comes back next week on the 10th to give you an update on kind of adjustments to the budget, we're going to bring you a proposal that adds some additional resources to the rental registry program with a way to pay for it. So I'm just giving you an early heads up that you're going to see that. We talked about it briefly on the 14th, and then we're just waiting to kind of finalize the numbers, but we'll have something to propose to you on November 10th.
Thank you. And you mean for 2026, not a long term?
Correct, for 2026.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to thank, sorry, good evening again, Mayor and Council. I want to thank Jacinda for covering some of the homeless response in relation to the home fund. It is a complex budget and complex operations between the two teams, so there's, there's obviously some integration, but we've been intentional in separating the two teams with two separate but very interrelated missions. So I am pitch hitting for Kim Conrad this evening, and these are her slides, and so I can only say that I'm glad it is this hour, perhaps you're fatigued, so we'll get right to it. So, you know, we're just going to start with challenges, but as you know, the nature of homeless response, nature of the work is unpredictable, but with really consistent demand. And so a lot of our funding, we're very dependent on, well, most recently, dependent on the right-of-way and most recently the encampment resolution program funding that comes from the state, that covers, as you can see here, 1.2 for Franz Anderson Operations, the 330 for Quinn Street Village, and then the City of Olympia's outreach and administrative costs. And so there's just that sub-bullet to note is that with Plum Street relocating, we are feverishly looking at ways in which we can incorporate those tiny homes into Franz Anderson and doing so within the allocated budget. As, as Jay had mentioned, we have limited funds, but we are making magic happen and seeing what we can get done there at Franz Anderson. We had some unbudgeted costs of the hazardous tree removal in the jungle, if you may have heard about that, it was a couple months ago at this point, so that was approximately $190,000 contract. As you can imagine, it's fairly difficult terrain and a difficult project given the circumstance. We also did the personal encampment clean at the, the last phase, and that was done in October. That cost approximately $150,000, I would say maybe even north of that, so that is an estimate as we're still receiving those invoices. In 20, late 2024, we did an encampment clean and a fence install, which cost $252,000. Again, these are those unexpected costs that keep really eroding our programmatic budget. And then finally, in terms of, we have limits as to how much we can spend for operational purposes from the home fund, and that's at 35%, we are reevaluating that to make sure that we, we maybe can afford some flexibility there because we certainly need it. Operational expenses continue to increase. If I've learned anything about this program, it is that, is that it really is a flow from, you know, outreach to unhoused individuals to then operational costs with tiny home villages, and then those operational costs hopefully will become capital costs, and that is the linear flow that I think is the homeless response team and the demands on the team. Looking ahead, we are, the team is continuing to monitor any new encampments that, that arise, and I appreciate council members and public letting us know about those. It's the, you know, it's, it's the most expeditious way that we can address it is to get to them before they expand, and to make sure that we connect with those individuals to give them the resources that we have available, right, and to, to work with them within the system that we have. We have already met and we've had a kickoff meeting with our internal staff on the jungle transition plan. This is something we're not, we're, we're wanting to take a moment to reflect that we've closed 11 encampments, and this is the last one. We've closed 11 over several years, and this is the last one. It is the most challenging, it will require the most amount of resourcing, and so right now, like I said, we're working with an internal team to develop a work plan, but that work plan is only, is only going to be feasible with our regional partners. And so, and as in quick collaboration, we'll be working with the RHC, with the county, and with our neighboring cities to make sure we're using our pooled funding absolutely, but also developing any partnerships that we can to, to get bricks and mortar on the ground, and if we can, and to have the, the jungle closure within a reasonable bound of time. We're not quite ready to say when until we get, develop that work plan and have a more definitive schedule. And I've already talked about the Plum Street Village relocations and site work, so there you have it. That is the end of Kim's presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan, Kim.
It's a compliment, thank you.
City Manager Bernie.
Thank you. I wanted to add one thing to this because I've, I've gotten this question from a couple council members as we've thought about the fact that we got less right-of-way dollars in this last biennium and the worry about ongoing costs to fund our programs. It was about, I think, as the council knows, as part of interlocal agreement with the county around our home funds, 65% of our home funds go to the county to be used through the RHC process. We retained 35% of the funding. Over time, and I got asked this question, is there a moment in time when that expires, when the whole, the other 35% goes to the Regional Housing Council? There is no hard date, there is no date in interlocal that, that is date certain. The language says that we can, so long as we're still supporting homeless response projects like Quinn Street Village, we retain the 35%. If at some point in time, all those projects could discontinue because we've housed everyone and we no longer have an ongoing need for encampment support, or, and/or, the Regional Housing Council has taken on full support of our sites. Until one of those things happens, we retain that 35%. The other thing that I'll say, because Susan pointed this out to me too when I was asking lots of question about this agreement, is this agreement can also be amended through a conversation by all parties. And why I think that's relevant is if the right-of-way initiative is to be, if it, if it doesn't continue to be funded over the long term, we have a lot of really significant projects that exist here in Olympia, and if the right-of-way dollars go away, we, we may be in a place of having to renegotiate this in our local to make sure we have the funding here in Olympia to support the projects that are here in Olympia. So I don't know what that looks like right now, I'm going to, I know we're going to continue to, to fight hard to continue state funding to the right-of-way initiative, but if and when it goes away and we still have the projects we have, we're going to have to have a, a different conversation through the Regional Housing Council and the county. So I'm just putting that as a placeholder.
Thank you, Jay. What comes to mind for me is our state legislative agenda that we'll be having a conversation about shortly, and obviously, I think we have a great story to tell about what we do with the dollars that are allocated, you know, for this purpose, so thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Lights out.
All right. Seeing none.
Thank you. That concludes the presentation on the rates and fees. We'll bring back more information on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to you next Monday with the budget presentation, and then the rest of this you'll see as the budget adoption ordinance comes around in December. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mike, and thank you to all the staff who waited patiently for almost two and a half hours before you got started, so thank you. So that concludes all of our business for tonight. I'll move on to the council reports, and I'll begin with a very, very brief mayor's report, which is, last week I had a meeting with Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, asking her, pleading with her, rather, to please balance holding the line as the minority party for the purposes of protecting Americans from astronomical increases to their insurance premiums, but also, please open the government. And so we are, you know, having, she's home a lot, and so she took the time to, to meet with several local officials throughout the, the district to speak about what's concerning us. Those things that I mentioned earlier, SNAP, as well as our concerns around BLS and, you know, the Medicaid reductions, something that other jurisdictions joined in on and agreed with me, that they are also concerned about that, as well as just some of the interesting policies that are coming out of the Department of Defense around engaging members of Congress and state elected officials. We recently had a, a local elected officials council with the South Sound Military Communities Partnership canceled because of this interesting DOD policy about military officials engaging with elected members. And so there has since been some clarity around this policy that they mean this only for purposes of when they're in DC, but that was not clear based on the memorandum that they've put out, and so there's just a lot of confusion going on there. So there was some communication about that. I expressed that explicitly as a concern since she represents one of the largest military installations in our country that's close to us. So, yeah, tho, those were the concerns that I brought up, and granted, there's not a lot that she can promise in this moment, but she knows that it's on the minds of, you know, the leaders here at the city, so that's my report. And I will start to my right with Councilmember Vanderpool.
I only really have one item to, to report on. At, at the Climate Collaborative, we had a presentation, and I may ask us to, to bring it here in the future, but we had someone from the People's Economy Lab come and talk about citizen assemblies and the idea of using that participatory model for policy direction and solutions. And I bring this up because Mayor Potemwe had us, had a, a meeting here in the council chambers, it was a couple months ago, when we're looking at the various advisory boards and like the future advisory boards, right? And I can send some of this over to you folks about this, but it's, it's a very interesting concept where instead of having just forums and having people come and talk, you would, you would assign them or give them caucuses to work on ideas and work with staff, and it would be ongoing, and anyone from the community can come along and, and work on it. It's something that Seattle apparently approved but never funded. It's something that exists in various forms of government on different levels. It's very, it's a very interesting way of, I guess, extending democracy and allowing people to participate more and own up to the ideas that are, allow them to participate their own ideas into the process, rather than having a sign, having someone who's on advisory board that's selected by the council, it's more of an open process. And I, I think that that's something that I find very interesting, especially right now where we are, and so I, I would entertain that idea in the future if anyone wants to have that conversation. Again, there's a million different versions of this. The, again, the idea is to have ongoing meetings where you come and you talk about a particular issue that needs to be resolved as a public, and they essentially work through it with staff and with council, and then they, they create policy recommendations, and then that goes to the, essentially what the advisory boards do, but it's an open process. I thought it was a very I thought it was a very interesting presentation. Again, in the future, if anyone wants to learn a little bit more about it, let me know.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Mayor Protem, when?
Yeah, I'm really interested just in exploring all the ways that, that local governments have found impactful resident input, I guess, in our policy and processes. So I think the future is now. So if you could send me that information, that would be great because we are, you know, staff are working on, on what those recommendations are. And so, again, you know, we don't have the goal of disbanding every advisory body. It's just about, hey, what are, what's the purpose here? And are we achieving that with what we're currently doing, right? So please do, please do share that with me. Yeah. And also, if you could put Assistant City Manager Stacy Ray on that, that would be appreciated, okay? Her and I are regularly talking about this, so that would be wonderful.
I'll send you all the information.
Oh, you got notes too?
No, I just have a ton of it. The person who gave us the presentation gave us a lot of information.
Oh, okay. I was going to say.
I'm just warning you.
Okay. You know, mobile bullet points, girl. Get to the point. But yes, send me every, send me whatever you want to send me, and I'll be appreciative.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none. Councilmember Gilman.
So I've been in conversation with folks about how we communicate about food resources, and I just, I'm really grateful for the communication that Assistant City Manager Stacy Ray highlighted at the beginning of the meeting. And I also want, and I'm super Sunday and several other non-governmental organizations just really scaling up quickly, and I think that's amazing. The thing I want to underscore is my interest isn't in gently expanding services that are mostly aimed to very low or no income people. We think about how to make sure that the unhoused folks are fed when in fact we have over 35,000 SNAP recipients in Thurston County. So the question is, how do we make sure there's food security for tens of thousands of people as well as continue to provide compassionate assistance for a couple thousand very high needs people? But I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that other 33,000 people who have depended on the SNAP, the Quest Card, whatever, the food assistance as part of their budget who live paycheck to paycheck. So I'm hoping that as we move forward, that we can imagine that it's, it's a lot larger share of our, percentage of our community who live paycheck to paycheck and are seriously impacted by something like cutting off a couple hundred dollars a month of food assistance. So.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Councilmember Gilman? Councilmember Vanderpool?
You know, I'm glad you bring this up. I mean, there's, I had a friend of mine message me the other day who works for the post office, and, you know, the other part of this, I think, that is, that was, has been ongoing is the amount of people that work in our community that work for the federal government who are not being paid. And they asked me, has anyone in the sound considered putting a pause on rent? And I said, I don't know. I said, I would, I'd ask. I'd ask my councilmates, I'd ask the city manager, but I don't know. There's, we're, right now SNAP is the one that's on top of mind, but there's so many like compounded effects that are happening right now all over the place. And I just wanted to also mention that that's also part of the issue because not just the post office, but like, I know I have friends at Ecology who half their, half their paycheck comes from the federal government, and their boss's boss that comes from that side of the funding, does, it doesn't work for the federal government anymore, has been eliminated entirely through the EPA eliminations. And so I'm very curious, I mean, we have, as a local government, a very limited amount of funding, but I also wonder about what can we do creatively, thinking about what other cities are doing around the sound to get through this.
Yes. Well, you might hear something in a moment. Stay tuned. Yes. Questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman?
Cooper's member.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Cooper.
Since you brought it up, I was going to bring it up too. I can find no less than two federal judges who have ordered the administration to pay SNAP, and today they said they may be able to do partial payments, may. And so I was going to ask that we direct the city manager to get $10,000 from Council Gold Money to the food bank as soon as possible, and then come back and let us know in a couple of weeks if there's a bigger need than that to get Olympia through the holidays.
Mayor Protem, when?
You know, on its face, I really like that. Why $10,000?
Because I don't know how much we have left.
Okay.
And I know there's like immediate shortages on the shelves all over the state, and so any cash that we can get in their hands to buy food helps.
Okay.
I don't believe we've spent very much.
Yeah. Could we, could we maybe through one-on-ones, or could we just give a little time to think about what that number is? I'm not trying to necessarily slow us down.
That's cool.
I am actually trying to slow us down in this moment from deciding the amount. I think it's a very good idea, although I just want to make sure maybe like if we're giving, you know, if we're directing it where it needs to be directed, are we giving the right amount that we would need to? Yeah, I just want to take just a little bit of time.
Yeah, and I was really just trying to get something moving, knowing that, like Council member Green just said, she thinks maybe we only spent 20. That means we could have a sizable ability, but, you know, and then is there other ancillary food needs outside of the food bank? I don't know the answer to that question either.
Yes. I'm going to say Councilmember Bernie. It's getting late. City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, we'll, I was just looking at Joan to see if she could quickly tell me what the balances of Council Gold Money. I'm not going to put her on the spot. So we'll, we'll get, we'll get that number tomorrow, and then I'll spend, I'll get that out to all of you. And then the other thing too is I'm happy to put in a phone call to the food bank and just see what would be helpful, at what level. And I'll do all that here in the next couple of days and then get back to all of you if that works.
Yes. Very helpful. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Cooper, for that suggestion, and I think it's a great one. And I've seen other things, like other communities use their reserves, or they will tap into their reserves to help with this sort of thing. So just something else to keep in mind also for the future when we, we really, yeah, when things get worse.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Sure.
And I, I almost sent this to all of us via text this week, but then I heard that they were talking about funding it possibly, but the mayor of Birmingham, Alabama put a million dollars of their city reserve in food this week. And when I was thinking about all of the conversations we've had about reserve, you know, when are they for? It's this kind of a moment. So I think we just, once we find out what the real need is in our community, we can figure out how to respond as we're able.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. Definitely do some evaluation because I'm getting that vibe from MPT over here.
Okay, let's, yes, we care. Let's not be reactionary. Okay, they said maybe they can do partial. It's just, you know, I mean, this is happening now. Tomorrow, something else is going to happen. We need to make sure that we have reserves. So anyways, I know you're going to look into it. I'm going to relax. Okay.
This is a moment where you're both right. So, okay. We're going to move on. Any additional questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? All right. Seeing none. Mayor Protem, when?
I've said enough tonight. Just doing my job.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Just one last reminder to get those ballots in by 8:00 PM tomorrow, and to all of us who are on the ballot or not, thank you for your service.
Well said. Thank you. Looks like you got an answer.
You have $100,000 available to you in your Council Gold Money.
Let's make it 12. That's what I thought, that, well, actually, I didn't think it was that much. But let's do some evaluation of what's needed.
Yep, I'll find out.
And let's come up with a figure. Yeah. Okay.
But that's, that's helpful because that's a substantial amount of money. As you're, as you're near the end of the year, you typically have not spent it. So I'll do an evaluation. I'll get back to all of you ASAP.
Wow. I'm really surprised by that because we did the refugee funds, right? And then we did.
Yep. That was 10. Twenty, 20.
That was, okay. All right.
I know we did 30.
Okay. Nobody knows. Anyway.
Joan's working on the, on the quick.
Okay.
So we'll clarify everything, and I'll get you all the exact numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Vanderpool.
While city manager's looking into that, if you, if you end up talking to your colleagues at the other cities, the other mayors, asking them if they're interested in matching any of this, that would be even better for, you know, just, just thinking about where we've done these things in the past, if they're interested. I know they also have tight budgets, but just a thought.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
And I'll put that out to the other city managers and the county managers as well that we're considering this and see if they can run it up the chain too.
Great. Thank you. All right. And city manager, last but not least.
Just one quick one. I'm going to be out next week at a conference as part of my left Plan Two Retirement Board duties. So I'll be out of the office, and Stacy Ray will be the acting city manager next week, and we'll be occupying this chair at council next week. So, go Stacy.
No pressure. All right. Well, thank you, City Manager Bernie. Just one last plug to the community, to please vote by 8:00 PM tomorrow. It is election day. And just a reminder that we will be meeting on Monday of next week, November 10th, not Tuesday. So with no further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.